Okay. Good evening. It's Thursday, April 10, 2025, and I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the South Brunswick Board of Education and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know, I love it. I heard our little kids saying the pledge. Yay! Yay. Okay, I'd like to read a statement of advance notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting the interests is discussed and acted upon. The primary purpose is for board members to discuss and vote on board business. In accordance with this provision of this act, the board secretary has caused notice to this meeting 48 hours prior, including date, time, and location, to be posted in the South Brunswick Public Library and Board Office, filed with the township clerk, and communicated to the Home News and the Star Ledger. It is also posted on the district website. Roll call, Mr. Palowski.
Ms. Julie Farrar?
Present.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
Here.
Mr. Rajar Krishna?
Present.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Present.
Dr. Smithe Raj? Mrs. Lisa Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Rajesh Shoney?
Here.
Mrs. Deepa Karthik? Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Here.
We have quorum.
Okay. I need approval of the minute agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve tonight's meeting agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
And now I need approval of the minutes of the March 13, 2025 Board Minutes. May I have a motion? Ms. Rogers in a second. Ms. Farrar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our next order of business is a report. Is she here? Oh. It would have been, but our student representative is not here, so... So the next up would be the report of our superintendent. Mr. Fetter.
Welcome, everyone. Try and go fast. We have a lot going on tonight. First, there's a whole bunch of people here because we have... It's not for the budget. I know it's not for the budget. We have our honoring our educator and educator support persons of the year tonight from our schools. That's like one of the best nights of the year, so I'm glad we have so many people here for that. Quick calendar update. We're gonna send this out as well. But there's a calendar change for June. Right now, we have June 5 off, which is a Thursday, and June 6 is an early release day. We actually have to flip-flop those. So we're gonna put this out so you can see it. It actually is a pretty good flip-flop in this case. School will be closed on Friday, and there'll be an early release day on Thursday. And this is due to Eid. And I'm not exactly sure where the mistake comes from, but it's a mistake that we are fixing. But in this particular case, it's a pretty easy one to resolve. So I think we all prefer to be off on a Friday than a Thursday, and this actually works well. But it is being done strictly for that reason. And again, you'll be getting a letter from Lourdes on that, I guess tomorrow we'll send that out. And so everyone can see that. If there's any questions, you just reach out to my office. You also received a community letter and a survey. This is regarding the work we're doing for the K-5 study on all the enrollment coming in. And so far, we had almost 1,100 people fill out the survey, so thank you. I'd like to get that up to about 2,000. So we usually have a big hit once we resend it out again. So we'll probably resend it out again and get a couple more hits. And then we know it's the break, so we obviously will hold off for next week and then revisit it again when we get back. But that reminds us all, we have a spring break is coming up next week. And much needed, much needed. Especially after tonight's budget presentation. School performance reports are out, so if you want to look online, you can see all about our school district and any other school districts. We have the High School Perindel Player Spring Musical is coming out. It's Mean Girls, so great play. That'd be a lot of fun. That's tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday. The big event of the month after this event tonight with our staff is, of course, the 20th Annual Joanne Kirkus Student Art Gallery. And again, that is just one of the highlights of the district. Amazing, amazing work of our kids. Our art teachers and staff do an incredible job putting this together. So looking forward to that. It's April 23, and we hope to see everybody there. It's usually one of the most packed events of the year. April is Autism Acceptance Month. There's over 50 years of that. So just an important aspect that we honor and show appreciation for all of our students and families. That autism is involved in their life. It's an important part to remember and to be aware of and to support of. Let's see else. We have another... Nope, 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 nooo. I think that's gonna be it. I'm gonna stop there. And again, thanks all for coming out. And you are all welcome to stay after the teacher recognition to hang out for the budget. It's about an 80, 90-minute presentation. Very exciting stuff. So we hope you all stay. Who's planning on staying? Give me a round of hands.
One.
Meg's non-tenured. Got it? See how this works? All right, we got one. Good deal. I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Okay, well, without further ado, we are so thrilled and pleased to honor the people that we are honoring tonight because before there's doctors, and before there's lawyers, and before there's firemen, and before there's judges, there are teachers. And it just is such a wonderful thing to celebrate. And without the teachers, there wouldn't be any other careers, but without our support staff, it would make our teachers' lives very difficult. So this is an awesome night, and without further ado, Ms. Blair Eisman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Members of the board, our honorees, their friends, family, and colleagues, and everyone tuning in at home. I'm Blair Eisman, Director of Programs and Professional Development, and I have the honor of recognizing this year's educators and educational support people of the year. This is a time-honored tradition in the district dating back to 1996. Each year, staff, students, and parents are invited to submit letters nominating staff members across the district. A selection committee then has the difficult task of reading hundreds of nominations and scoring them on a given set of criteria, and in the end, just 24 are selected, and that brings us here this evening. Tonight's honorees inspire learning on a grand scale and make a difference in the lives of students, colleagues, and the school community with their caring support and unwavering work ethic. They are leaders, highly skilled, and dedicated to their profession. Of course, some thank yous. Thank you to our nomination writers and readers, as well as our admin, who surprised each honoree in their building with a special announcement and for being here tonight. Thank you to Rachel Collyboss for all the behind-the-scenes work she did months in the making. She takes great care in making tonight special for our honorees, and I couldn't do it without her. Thank you to the PTO from each building. They purchased one of the honorees' gifts for tonight, a desk name plate for them to display proudly wherever they choose, and I'm so grateful for their continued support of this program. And thank you to the Ed Foundation of South Brunswick for their generosity in supporting the program. They purchased the second print, the second gift that our honorees will receive. It's a framed print that you'll see up here in a few minutes that ties into our theme, and I believe Caroline's here tonight from the Ed Foundation. And we thank them for all of their support, and you can visit edfoundationsp.org to learn more about their work and how you could support the foundation. So in the past, I've found my inspiration for this recognition program in books, trees, the stars in the sky, and even our very own students. This year, though, Mr. Fetter gets to take the credit. I toyed around with a couple different ideas, but I kept coming back to this year's district theme: Being present is a gift to yourself and others. Presence is more than just showing up. It's offering your full attention, your heart, and your talents to the moment and the people around you. And a gift is more than something you give. It's something you are. Each year you spend with our students and community is its own gift, a gift of time, of dedication, of a love for what you do. Today, we celebrate not just what you accomplish in a moment, but the legacy you're building year after year. Thinking about gifts then led me to the idea of anniversaries. Whether it's a first or a 50th, they are celebrated as a symbol of value, growth, and impact. Many of you probably know that each anniversary has its own gift to mark the milestone. So tonight, as we celebrate each of our honorees, I'll share the anniversary they're marking with us this year as they accept this honor of educator or support person of the year and the gift they'll receive to remember the occasion. So I'd like to ask President Laura Hernandez to join me at the podium to help congratulate our honorees. And I ask that Brooks Crossing and Brunswick Acres honorees and admin come on down and stand along the wall here. When one school sits down, the next one can come up. Perfect, right there. So I'll start at Brooks Crossing with Mrs. Natasha Losoho, third-grade teacher. In just five years, Natasha has taken on many teaching positions: kindergarten, instructional support, special education, and now third grade. She moved into third grade mid-year when the Brooks Crossing community lost one of their own, Jennifer Spencer. A colleague shared, "Both our teachers and students were hit hard mentally, emotionally, and physically. Our staff was left without a friend, a teammate, and a colleague, and our students were left without a teacher." While everyone else was mourning the loss and wondering, "What would we do and who would fill this large voice..." ...large void, one person saw just what was needed and stepped up, and that was Natasha. She didn't think twice about it and flipped her world instantly to pick up the pieces of those students who needed it most. Her colleagues have called her brave, inspiring, unwavering, a hero, and naturally, a gift. The five-year anniversary gift is wood, so Natasha is being gifted this print of a birdhouse, which symbolizes protection, home, community, and remembrance, which couldn't be more fitting for her, and a nod to Jenny as well. Congrats. Mrs. Pallavi Tumar is a special education paraprofessional at Brooks Crossing. Her second-year anniversary brings the gift of cotton, so she's receiving this print of a quilt, which brings warmth and comfort. The same way a quilt wraps around you, Pallavi surrounds the classroom with a quiet and steady presence. She stitches together experiences and connections with students that tell a beautiful story. Her colleagues have said she has infinite patience, is a genuine and collaborative spirit, and gives students the time and space they need. Congratulations. Mrs. Teresa Foster, kindergarten teacher at Brunswick Acres, is in her 20th year in the district. She is receiving this print of teacups because her anniversary gift is china. Teacups carry warmth and can soothe the soul with just one sip, which is exactly what our little learners often need. Mrs. Foster pours from her cup daily with love, patience, guidance, and kindness. She's funny, thoughtful, and patient. A colleague shared, "She creates a space where every student feels important and valued," while another said, "One of the best gifts this job has given me is the opportunity to work with Teresa, to learn and to grow from her, and to be a better teacher because of her." Congratulations. Mrs. Ira Meta, preschool paraprofessional at Brunswick Acres, is in her 23rd year in the district. I've known her since I was a student teacher. She is being gifted a silver platter to mark this occasion. Like a silver platter, Ira is a constant support and holds the weight of what is placed on her with grace and strength. She's always reliable and cheerful and helps her preschoolers see themselves the way she sees them: smart, capable, special, and valued. The reflection of the lemon in this photo was an added bonus because it symbolizes her ability to find and spread positivity regardless of the situation. Congratulations to you. Ms. Ariel Selena, fifth-grade teacher at Cambridge Elementary, is in her fourth year in district. Her anniversary gift is a flower, so she's being given this print of marigolds. Every year at new staff training, I tell a story of how farmers plant marigolds next to other crops to help them grow. I encourage our new teachers to surround themselves with marigolds to find their people. Well, four years later, Ariel has become a marigold herself for everyone around her. She is supportive, caring, and motivating. She instills a love of learning and self-worth in her students. Parents have shared, "Ms. Selena puts so much work into learning about each student, their strengths and weaknesses, and seems to figure out a way to help each student grow. I'm not sure when she sleeps. Her energy and creativity is infectious. Her depth for understanding children and the effort she puts into teaching and forming connections is amazing." Congratulations. Ms. Jamie de Mary Guevara, head custodian at Cambridge Elementary, is in her 11th year in the district. 11 years brings the gift of steel, so she is being gifted this print of a bridge to symbolize the safety and support she provides to her school community. Just like we need a bridge to cross to get where we're going, students and teachers need a clean welcoming space to keep growing and learning together. Jamie's colleagues have called her a leader, dedicated, and valued, and praised her ability to foster relationships. Congratulations. Ms. Allison Alvaro, first-grade teacher at Constable. She is in her fifth year in the district, and she is being given this print of a wooden desk. A wooden desk symbolizes stability and the foundation of learning. It's steady, supporting all those who sit there. It's a witness to growth. Many nomination letters spoke to the ways Ally supports all her students academically, socially, and emotionally, but what stood out in particular is her work with a student with unique needs. She has created a warm, inclusive, and supportive environment where this student is provided with the same social opportunities and learning experiences as her peers. She has already started planning for the upcoming school year to ensure a student's success, gathering materials from second-grade teachers to ensure that the resources and worksheets are accessible to the student and that they're prepared for September. She has advocated for materials that she believes are necessary for the student to fully engage with the gen ed curriculum, and she's even contacted publishing companies and other vendors to inquire about available materials. I clearly can go on, but I'll end by saying what a gift. Congrats. Mrs. Donna Lou Allen is a special ed paraprofessional in her 17th year. The anniversary gift for her year 17 is furniture, so I chose a rocking chair because Donna is gentle and supportive. She moves with the rhythm of a student's needs. She has a quiet strength and is a safe place to just be, to rest, to breathe, to reflect. Her colleagues have recognized her compassion and attentiveness and how through a calm persistence, she strives for all students' success. Congratulations. People hate being the center of attention. It's gotta come down. Mrs. Kelly Craparada is a school psychologist for Dayton and Dean's Preschool. In year 20, she is being given a porcelain pear, which symbolizes timeless value. It's carefully crafted with attention to detail, the same way Kelly approaches our youngest learners with sensitivity, understanding, and a deep awareness of their needs. A colleague shared, "She is committed to fostering equity and belonging within the school community and actively helps colleagues create inclusive environments that meet the diverse needs of students." This is fitting because the pear also symbolizes nourishment and growth, which is exactly what she provides the Dayton and Dean's community. Congratulations. Mrs. Yuralese Joel Did I say that right?
Thank you.
is a preschool special education paraprofessional at Dayton and Dean's Preschool. For her year-four anniversary, she is being given a flower, the violet. Just as a violet symbolizes watchfulness, modesty, and faithfulness, she observes her students with a keen, gentle eye, always present but never seeking the spotlight. Her positivity and patience bloom with every interaction. Her work is rooted in kindness. A colleague shared, "She consistently provides support in such a meaningful and thoughtful way, always prioritizing the needs of others. Her presence in the classroom is invaluable. Her warmth and compassion make her a true gift to every student she interacts with." Congratulations. Mrs. Fatima Kenesha is a fourth-grade teacher at Greenbrook Elementary School in her 22nd year in the district. Because the gift for this anniversary is copper, she's being given a print of a penny, but not just any penny, a 1943 copper penny. Because of a copper shortage, pennies during this year were made of steel. However, a mistake in production led to some being made in copper, so if you find one, they're pretty valuable. Like Fatima, her qualities as an educator and person are hard to come by and make a lasting impression on her colleagues and students. A colleague shared, "If you were in Fatima's room anytime during the day, her phone could be ringing, teachers may be stopping by for advice, or former students are visiting for a hug or words of encouragement." She is the hub of our school, and everyone knows that if they stop by to see her, they will have an answer or a resource to help them by the end of the school day. Her ability to balance her experience combined with an open-mindedness and willingness to collaborate fosters a love of learning in her students and extends beyond her classroom. Congrats. Mr. Paul Keller is a custodian at Greenbrook Elementary. This is his 35th year in the district. The most years of our honorees tonight. The gift for this anniversary is coral, so he's receiving this print of the ocean floor. Coral is integral to the health of this ecosystem. Much like coral supports the entire reef, Paul cares for his school community with great care. A colleague shared, "Paul's contributions and efforts are measured far beyond maintaining the cleanliness of our classrooms. He helps to create a space where all students and staff feel seen, respected, and cared for. Though much of his work is done behind the scenes, its impact is felt throughout the school in a safe and inclusive environment where every student and staff member can thrive." Congratulations. Mrs. Janine Calendrusio, affectionately known and effectively as Ms. Cal, right? Third-grade teacher at Indian Fields in her silver year, year 25. For her gift, I chose a print of a silver pendant of the goddess Athena. Athena symbolizes mentorship, guiding others through challenges, offering wisdom, protection, and encouragement, ultimately inspiring their growth and empowerment. Janine offers exactly that. A colleague wrote, "Over the last two years, I have learned much about myself as a teacher: my management style, craft, and approach to challenges. Janine helped me become a better teacher and taught me things that cannot be found in a textbook." She goes to great lengths to support her students' academic and behavioral needs, instills structure and high expectations for success, and supports everyone, students and staff alike. A true mentor. Congrats. Mrs. Laura Furch is a special education paraprofessional at Indian Fields. This is her ninth year in the district, and the gift for year nine is pottery. She is being given this print because the gentle hands working with clay symbolizes the love and care she gives to each of her students as she helps mold them into the best versions of themselves. Laura is described as selfless, dedicated, a leader, and a role model. A colleague wrote, "Everyone feels safe, loved, and cared for when they are around her. There are so many things that Mrs. Furch does because she cares that it is hard to list them all, but all of those things make a huge difference and impact a student's well-being. A leader is someone that does the right thing all the time when no one is looking, and that is Mrs. Furch. She loves and cares unconditionally, and Indian Fields is a better place for it." Congratulations. Mrs. Edna Burkaw is a library media specialist at Mammoth Junction Elementary. Because the anniversary gift for year five is wood bookshelves, felt appropriate for this special librarian. Like bookshelves holding countless books, Edna holds a wealth of knowledge, creativity, experience, and opportunities for students to grow. Like bookshelves, she preserves and presents what's valuable. A parent wrote, "It struck me how differently Mrs. Burkaw saw her time with her students. Truly, she took every moment she had with them to expand their worlds. My kids have learned about the Northern Lights, toured the White House, watched endangered animals, learned about holidays, and so many more topics you would not expect for their library special. I believe she sees literature as a jumping-off point for teaching the world to her students, and what a true gift for all kids." Congrats. Mrs. Maria Lupo, two-time winner, is a special education paraprofessional in her 20th year in the district, first-time winning at Constable this year at Mammoth Junction. The gift for this anniversary is china, and she is being given a print of this porcelain vase, which symbolizes grace, stability, and a timeless foundation, much like her leadership and professionalism. Just as a vase holds and protects flowers, Maria fosters an environment for her students to grow whether they need to learn, or they need to be loved, or both. She is exactly what they need her to be when they need her to be it. Congratulations. Mrs. Laura Failan Colleen is a math teacher at Crossroads North. This is also her 20th year in the district. She is being given a print of a porcelain tile with the path... She is being given a print of a porcelain tile with the pattern of a ship because she's a steady presence providing direction and clarity. And since North's mascot is a Viking, we could also say it's a Viking ship, making it even more fitting. Laura's knowledge, care, and instruction gets students where they need to be. She steers her students through challenges and shifts with the wind to meet the needs of each of them. Students have said she helps them navigate the curriculum in a way that is fun. They also described her as encouraging, engaging, and enthusiastic about what she teaches, and they have the utmost respect for her. Congratulations. Mrs. Shamala Sampath Kumar is a safety paraprofessional at Crossroads North in her 19th year in the district. The anniversary gift for this year is bronze. She is being given a print of a key. A bronze key represents trust, and her colleagues and students know they could depend on her. It also represents responsibility, and she is consistently dependable. She is a key part of the North community and appreciated for the work she does every day. Congratulations. Mrs. Tracy Dovis is an art specialist at Crossroads South. This is her 12th year in district. The gift for this anniversary is silk. Silk is associated with softness, comfort, and enduring strength hidden beneath the surface, which couldn't be a more appropriate way to describe her. Silk represents transformation, and over the years, we've watched Tracy transform her teaching and transform her students as artists. A colleague wrote, "This year, Tracy has been particularly active in getting student art into the community. She has entered many of her students' art into local contests and shows, and they've won, allowing students the opportunity to shine and feel like a more valued part of the school and community. Imagine the confidence that she's instilling in these students, the passion she's developing, and the sense of creativity that she's cultivating. There's nothing truly more important than that." Congratulations. Mr. Chester M. Lee, also known as Chet, is a school security officer at Crossroads South. He could not be here tonight. It is his fourth year in the district, and the anniversary gift is flowers. He's being given this print of a fisherman surrounded by flowers in nature. There's a sense of peace and solitude with fishing. You have to be willing to adapt to changing conditions. You have to be patient and observant. A skilled fisherman reads the environment carefully, and Chet remains highly observant, noticing the smallest details that others might miss, ensuring the safety of all staff and students. He radiates a sense of quiet confidence and composure, and Crossroads South is lucky to have him, so congratulations to Chet. Ms. Shamila Chisti is a science teacher at South Brunswick High School, and this is her eighth year in the district. The gift for this anniversary is bronze, so she is being given a print of the statue of the thinker. Shamila is a maker of thinkers. She embodies and encourages curiosity daily. A former student wrote, "In physics, Newton's law says that objects at rest stay at rest unless acted upon by an external force. However, we could extrapolate more from this law than just the motion of physical objects. As people, we begin at rest, waiting for external forces to give us a reason to move, a reason to become more than what we are." And Shamila is that external force. And for those fortunate enough to be moved by her ability to teach, passion for learning, and oftentimes tragic attempt at being a comedian, they'll be able to tell you that her presence is truly a gift. Congratulations. Mrs. Patty Sutton is paraprofessional working in the science department at South Brunswick High School. This is her 23rd year in the district, and the gift for this anniversary is a silver plate. Silver is often associated with clarity and balance. Patty is described as kind and considerate, reliable, and trustworthy. A colleague wrote, "Patty began working with me to learn how to prepare the chemicals needed for lab activities. Although she had limited experience in formal science education, her common sense approach and commitment to learning made her a quick study. I predict that in a few more years, it will only be the lack of a formal degree that will separate her from an industry technician." Congratulations. Mrs. Jessica Ora is a learning consultant across two buildings in the district, supporting self-contained and general education programs. She is receiving this print of iron doors to mark this occasion and her sixth anniversary in the district. The doors symbolize her solid and dependable presence as she works to make sure all students are safe and in an environment that is both conducive to their learning styles and filled with support and love. She's described as trusted, smart, honest, and approachable. Through her tireless work, Jess opens doors to empowerment, growth, and learning that leads to lasting change. Congratulations. Yeah, ew. Last but not least, Mrs. Marcia Garitano, your boss will come. She is the administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent of business and board secretary. She's celebrating 24 years in the district. The gift for this anniversary is an opal. The opal symbolizes someone who is layered and vibrant, and just as the stone reflects shifting colors, Marcia shows her ability to adapt gracefully to any situation and meet the needs of those around her. A colleague shared Marcia has become the go-to resource for questions about district operations and history. Her extensive knowledge from almost 25 years of service provides context and understanding that newer staff members simply can't offer. By sharing this knowledge willingly and patiently, she helps maintain continuity in our district's operations and culture. And like the opal, Marcia adds strength and value in every circumstance. Congratulations. Please give all of our honorees one more round of applause. This concludes tonight's recognition program. Thank you so much for being here to celebrate with all of us, and I will turn it back over to Mrs. Hernandez.
Just a quick do one more. Quick thanks. So Blair, over there. Every year, this is, not only do we get to honor the people, but Blair does this, she writes that entire script, and she picks the theme, and she is amazing at this. One of her many incredible qualities, but could we give a round of applause for Blair?
Thank you. Scott Kim said I get to come back tomorrow.
You know, when I look around this room and I think that saying that it takes a village to raise a child, and in South Brunswick, we just have such an amazing village here. And tonight, to honor the best of the best is really amazing. And as far as Blair is concerned, I gotta be honest, Blair, I was bragging about you today because I also work in a district, and I was telling them tonight that this is our board meeting and how cool it is that we're honoring the teachers and the support staff, but we have this one person in our district that does these amazing things with these teachers. So I couldn't even come close to that. So I am grateful for that, but thank you. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, support staff. Thank you, Marcia, who I always call and say, "Where is David?" So thank you so much. Like Mr. Federer said, you are more than welcome to stay and enjoy the budget presentation, or we'll take a five-minute recess and you can leave. or we'll take a five-minute recess and you can leave. Okay, break's over, and we're back.
So we have two more presentations real quick. We're gonna start with Evelyn. You're up there for SB Reads. Is it just Evelyn, or nobody else?
Did you know that? As you remember, we had our second annual SB Reads. And as is the tradition now, we capture all the work that we do all year. And our librarian extraordinaire, Lisa Manganello, puts it all together, and I'm really excited about the theme this year.
Once upon a time, a Viking tale. South Brunswick Reads presents: Reading is a Gift, a partnership between South Brunswick Schools and our public library. Once upon a time, in the magical land of South Brunswick, there lived a Viking. The Viking knew that reading was a gift, and wanted to share his love for books and reading with his community. He wanted to give the gift of reading to all the students and families who would eventually call themselves Vikings. With the help of some dedicated librarians and administrators, the Viking decreed that February 24th would be South Brunswick Reads Night, an evening full of reading, community, and good cheer. A team of eager librarians, because the Viking knew that librarians make the best partners, called upon the magical Mrs. Nancy Duco Sweeney, SBHS's newest assistant principal, to create a selfie station where his young readers could show off their love for reading. But the Viking knew that librarians are community builders, and the district staff who arrived to be guest readers surely agreed. Reading some of their favorite picture books with Mrs. Sherry Sassin, joined by her very own special young reader. The South Brunswick administrators made this a night to remember for all. The community seemed excited just to hear a great story and meet the Viking. But the Viking knew the librarians had a secret. You see, our school librarians had invited their public library partners, who, led by Mr. Matt and his team, brought crafts and good cheer. "All of this reading is making me hungry," thought the Viking. Enter the PTO parents, led by the South Brunswick High School PTO. All of our school families contributed enough cookies to satisfy even the hungriest reader, while the magical team of Capes and Flanders made hot chocolate by the gallons. In the cafeteria, parents and students could listen to SBHS students speak about why reading is a gift, write thank-you notes to the brave first responders who fought wildfires in California, and listen to the fantastic musical stylings of the Crossroads Jazz Band. But the Viking and his friends realized that they needed even more guest readers to give all of the future Vikings a chance to explore the SBHS library. Our future Vikings heard from our principals, administrators, police officers, township officials, and school board members, all of whom had picked a special book to share. The middle school team challenged readers to create a box of their most treasured memories and to design book covers that explain their personal journey. But the Viking and his friends wanted more, and the librarians came through inviting local authors to come and share their books with our families. The Viking was surprised to learn that some of our own students were already published authors and only too glad to show their work to the community. The Viking realized that students at SBHS also loved to read. Our multilingual learners shared books, reading and writing proudly in both their home and school languages. SB Earth shared picture books about the importance of being kind to our planet while making bookmarks from recycled materials. Ms. Payne's Honors Global Studies students shared the picture books that they had created and even earned a visit from Mr. Fetter. She's the first shared books about empowering young women to consider careers in science and technology. The Viking wanted to make sure that his new friends had something to take home to remind them to see reading as a gift. At the bookmark station, readers could pick a bookmark designed by Ms. Durie's 10th graders or design one of their own to encourage them to keep reading. Many families arrived with book donations, which are volunteers boxed up to send to Book Smiles, a nonprofit organization that helps to distribute new and gently-used books to New Jersey communities where books are not always available. With that, the Viking realized that the second annual South Brunswick Reads Night had been a big success. And while he was tired, he knew that the librarians of South Brunswick would continue to encourage all of our readers to keep reading and enjoy the gifts that they find inside each and every book. The end.
We already have plans to top that next year. We're planning something massive. So it will be the third annual one, and we can't wait. Thank you.
All right, Taylor and Kelly. Come on up, bring the students with you. This is our South Brunswick Helping Hands, and they're gonna do a presentation for us on distracted driving initiative they're working on. Welcome. Thank you.
Hello, everyone who is still here. My name is Taylor Payne, and this is Kelly Zalinski. We are both social studies teachers at South Brunswick High School, and we also have the honor of being co-advisors of SB Helping Hands, which is a community service club that focuses on service above self.
So our students want to give you a little piece of our campaign. So we had custom-made, designed by one of our officers last year, bumper magnets. So we're actually selling those at local businesses in the community, but we'll let them tell you more about that. But it's been really an honor. I think this is our fourth or fifth year doing this in conjunction with the Brain Injury Alliance of New Jersey. It's a statewide competition and campaign because research shows that peers listen to each other about things that are important more than they listen to us adults, unfortunately for us teachers. But they've done some really amazing things, and I've watched them grow over the years and come up with even more amazing initiatives. And we're really, really excited for them to share with you what's to come this year. So we'll give it away.
I'm just testing if this works. So, great.
Hi, I'm Julia. I'm the president.
Hi, I'm Angelina. I'm the vice president.
So this is a picture of our board, and then our co-advisors, Ms. Payne and Ms. Zalinski. And then we're gonna talk to you guys a little bit about our campaign. So our club focuses on community service, and we promote this throughout our school, community, and beyond. At each meeting, we have a speaker from a charity or an organization that comes to speak to us about important issues like cancer, autism, and even mental health. And we focus on these issues and partner with the charity to give back to them at each month's meeting. So this is our campaign, Mind on the Road, Hands on the Wheel. And we are participating in the Champion Schools Initiative, partnered with the Brain Injury Alliance of New Jersey. And our campaign focuses on reducing the impact of texting and driving. We aim to help educate our community on the dangers of distracted driving and the impact that it has on themselves and others around them. Now we're going to show you some of the things we've done in our campaign. Here we have some images of things we posted on social media, on our Instagram. We also created a billboard that's by the Target. And then here we also have a t-shirt that we made and we threw at our pep rally. We also have distracted driving tables that we hold once a month, and they have different themes for each month that focus on different dangers of distracted driving. We have games, trivia, prizes that help to educate our school community.
Okay, we also have held a movie night at our school where we watched the movie Turbo, and we raised $500, in which we donated to the NDD organization, which helps spread awareness about distracted driving. We also created bookmarks with facts about distracted driving on it, and we donated it to our public library so then people in our community know more about our campaign. And also, during one of our club meetings, we had South Brunswick High School's very own physics teacher, Mr. Rosenwald, talk to the students about the dangers of distracted driving as he was affected by it. In addition, and we also collaborated with local businesses like Giuseppe's and Pizza Tolitia to sell our bumper magnets that we showed to you guys. And all the proceeds that we make by selling these will also go to NDD organization. And in a few weeks, we are actually visiting Mama Junction Elementary School, and there we will teach the students about how to be a safe passenger. And the photos here are from the visit that we had last year as well. And in May, we plan to have a club meeting dedicated to distracted driving awareness, and our guest speakers will be a local police officer and a representative from NJAM Assurance, teaching the students about the dangers of distracted driving and the consequences. And we'll have fun and engaging activities like drunk goggles, which help teach the students the effects of substances. And if you guys have any questions, we would love to answer them. We have a few more things. We'd also like to play our PSA that we made.
Hey, yeah, I'm on my way. There's like a lot of traffic right now, but I'll be there soon. Just give me like five minutes.
Just one quick text before I go.
Sure, because that worked out so well last time.
Whoa, who said that?
Me, your car. You know, the thing you're supposed to be paying attention to while driving? Oh, look at you, multitasking pro, huh? Sure, let me just handle the steering, braking, and not crashing for you while you scroll on TikTok. Visual distractions, check. Manual distractions, check. Cognitive distractions, check. Double check. How you got your license beats me. Being in a rush doesn't give you a pass to not practice safe driving. You and everyone on the road share a responsibility to keep each other safe. Take it seriously and take actions against distractions.
Mind on the road, hands on the wheel.
Lastly, we also have one of our flyers, and you can scan the QR code to sign the pledge on being a safe driver.
I just wanna make a comment. I just wanna say thank you. It's so important right now. There's a lot of accidents lately, especially on route home. And the more that we get out there and present information such as this may help save a life. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump on Ms. Rogers' comment. Not only thank you, but thank you that you're students, and you're doing this. Like, to hear adults, like you said, preach blah, 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 is so much different than hearing peers and having our kids realize this is a problem. This is really a problem. So thank you. Good job. Keep it up. Keep it up. We really appreciate it. Any more questions, any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much. Ready for you? Are we ready for you? You are next, unless I go into this. I feel like there's like the hit squad in the back row. It's South Brunswick's finest, our administrative team. Yay! Just hope people out there in television land know your administrative team is back there.
All right. So, gonna, it's, last slide. But Dave and I wanna make sure that we... Yeah, sure, move on. Anyone who wants to move is welcome to move or come through. So we've been working on this. You know, we do this for about three or four months till we get to about here, and we go all the way to May 1st. So tonight, we're gonna explain a bunch of things, kind of give the background, and try to move as fast as we can. But there's a lot here. So I'm gonna start off with the number-one topic of state aid. So as we know, state aid has been a continuous problem for us. This year, they put a guardrail up so we would not lose more. We were apparently scheduled to lose 2.2 million. Instead, they only had us lose 427,000, plus $645,000 in stabilization aid that we received last year that they've informed us we are not receiving this year. Overall, we're down about $1,070,000 from the state. This is just a continued problem, but the numbers we wanna show you that kind of demonstrate the real situation that is the formula. The gigantic problem in the state of New Jersey is the formula. If you are paying attention to Jersey news as of late, you have seen many, many, many school districts reporting catastrophic loss. The reality is, no district lost more than 3% of their state aid. Yet, you're hearing districts report catastrophic loss. We've been doing this now for six years, where every year we lose money. And we're still in a catastrophic loss. So, you know, we've done a lot of things to try and avoid that. Last year, there was a huge thing that the board voted to do, in order to bring some more money in, that saved us from catastrophe last year and what would have been further catastrophe this year. But if we look at '24, '25, '26, the item's in blue. I'm not getting into the whole local fair share explanation again. I've done that for all of you many times. But the local fair share is the amount of money the state says South Brunswick should be paying for schools. So last year, we were at 142 million. We closed the gap by increasing the revenues by 8.93%. We actually thought this year we might get money from the state because we did the right thing, again, which we've been doing for years. No, look what they did. The formula took the 142 million, which was the local fair share, and they decided somehow to raise it 15%. The $166 million local fair share is more than our operating budget. So the state is saying South Brunswick taxpayers should be paying more than we even spend altogether, including all the money we get. That's what they're saying. It's not reasonable. It's not mathematical. It's simply another example, I'm not gonna say it, how the government in New Jersey doesn't care. And I hope they're watching, because they have not shown one inkling that they actually care enough to understand to do something about this. Instead, we hear the governor's speech every year for the last three years, touting we fully funded the schools. We fully funded the schools. Over the last three years, the governor's budget has given $3 billion, $3 billion to public schools. In that time, South Brunswick has lost $11 million. What could possibly be the explanation? I'll leave it to you to figure out one, because I don't have one. Well, I don't have one. I'm gonna say on camera. So on top of this issue, we have a tax levy cap. We wanna just explain carefully how this all works. So basically, what you're gonna see is this is how we spend our money. 57% of our money goes to salaries. 18% goes to benefits. 3% to energy. 7% to transportation. 3% to tuition, out-of-district tuition. Students that attend other schools, that's mostly special education. In fact, it's totally special education. Instructional supplies and buildings and grounds. That's not all of it, but that's the general gist of it. So what we want you to keep in mind, with a 2% cap, we have to deal with each one of those line items. And so when you do that, and we look at that, salaries at 57% of the $157 million is $89 million. 3.5%, which was the increase, is $3.1 million. That's already more than 2% of our operating budget, that we're allowed, 2% of our tax levy that we're allowed to go up. So we're already in the hole before we do anything because of this formula, the continuation of taking money, and the 2% cap. Next, we have benefits. Benefits, we are under trend. We are actually doing well at 11.5% increase. I'm gonna get into that a little bit more in detail, but that's actually a good number for benefits in the country right now. That's benefit medical and RX, pharmacy and dental. Those two numbers equal almost $6.4 million. We're only allowed to go up $2.6 million. You're getting the gist. We can go through this each line by line of those same bigger issues, and you simply get to a point where you're $8.2 million needed to roll over the budget. Well, we're allowed to get 2%. Leaves us a $5.5 million deficit. This year, due to the insane cost of healthcare in the country, which affects everybody, including South Brunswick, we actually qualify, which I'll get into, a waiver which allows us to go to 3.51%. I'll explain as we go. That is the basics of the problem with a 2% cap. Now, I've explained this to legislators multiple times, many times. And there are a few that are listening and trying, but they're outnumbered by people that are not trying. Or they're trying but not trying for South Brunswick. I will give credit to Andrew Zwickler. I will give credit to Michelle Drewless and to Roy Fryman. They have been friends to South Brunswick, trying to do things. Roy Fryman has been working on this. He's written bills. Andrew Zwickler last year prepared a bill. Michelle Drewless has joined those bills, Andrea Katz. These are people that we know are trying, but they are being met with resistance to do the things that need to be done legislatively. That's where we are, but I'm gonna keep going. So that's our number. State aid is reduced by $1,065. There's a 2% cap gap I just showed you with an increase of 3.51%. We are still $3.6 million in the hole. That's with the 3.51%. If it was only 2%, we'd be another couple million dollars in the hole. So that's where we are. This is the hole we try to fill. So that's where we are. This is the hole we try to fill. This is what we do. Every year, we're doing the same thing. The people in the back, you call them the hit squad in the back, they have to sit and talk to staff about the carnage that is $3.6 million, $6.6 million last year, $4 million the year before. I honestly, I'm thrilled they come back every day. So thank you. You have to be at work by 9 tomorrow. It is every year. It is debilitating and it is a morale killer in this district. Right now, there are people waiting, waiting to be told if they have work or not next year. It's every single year. So, and I'm gonna share this. This is not a, the fault of anyone. This is not South Brunswick doing something wrong. This is the reality of healthcare in America right now. GOP ones. They are, the only one I can ever think of is Ozempic, is the, is the kind. That one line item of drug, classification of drug in just South Brunswick has gone up over a million dollars in one year. Again, every, every RX, if you look at the average RX pharmacy in the country, it hovers between 25 and almost 30%. It's not because of South Brunswick faculty and staff. It's the reality of our country right now. Anti-inflammatories, the most well-known one that I can think of is Humira. That, that one line of anti-inflammatory medications have gone up 531,000 in one year. Just those two numbers are almost our full 2%. The cost of procedures, meaning the claims, just when you look at, if we did the exact same procedure last year and did the exact same procedure again this year, no changes, a $1.8 million increase in the cost of healthcare. Now, we beat the trend at 11.5%, but 11.5% is a lot of money. $3.4 million. So $3.4 million plus the cost of our staffing and all their other expenses puts us at the point with even the $2 million we're allowed to get. This is the formula in the state budget system. Dave puts in our numbers and the formula says, "Hey, Dave, you can, you can get this waiver if you want." So the waiver is a choice of the board. In other words, no one's giving us the money. A waiver means it allows us to tax. Nobody wants to tax. But this is where the situation is in South Brunswick. While many districts can sit and not tax and haven't had to tax in six or seven years, that is in our situation. Big factors. I'm hitting, trying to hit the big factors for you. Enrollment is a key factor. In this particular case, this year, it's a positive factor financially, but only financially. This is our district enrollment for the last four years and a projected fifth year. As you can see, we've gone down from 7,900 to 7,200. So almost 10% in the last five years is projected for next year. That 10% has allowed us to endure and handle these fiscal challenges. Now, that's not a good thing. We have to unfortunately reduce our staffing. But we're able to manage to a degree, to a degree. That's what we're looking at right now. But I'm gonna get more specific. People ask me this question, "Why is it happening against South Brunswick?" I'm gonna give you some things from our demographer and then some things from societal that are going on. So we are what's called an aging community. What that means is our families don't leave. The normal rollover of a home is a family buys a home. Their kids go to the schools. They stay, they either leave the home after high school or after college or about that timeframe. Our families don't leave. If you think about it, in 2015, we had 9,100 students with less homes. Right? Now, how do we go down almost 2,000 students with more homes? Because people don't leave. And there's a 13 to 17-year rollover before a home, if you have a multi-generational household, before the next generation in that household starts producing school-aged children. That's a lot longer than I sell my house and a family buys my house with young kids ready to start school. So in our community, we have a lot of multi-generational families and they don't roll over the homes as fast. In our case, incredibly slow. So the, that means the original homeowners are older, aging. That's a reality in South Brunswick. There also is, you look at birth rates, there's been less births than there used to be. The next one is gigantic issue, the housing market. Since around 2022, it's gone kind of wacky. And even the later years now, we're dealing with mortgage rates that make it very difficult for someone to move out of one home to buy another home. Chances are, if you've had a home since pre-2020 or even 2020, you have an interest rate somewhere in the 2% to 3%. Those interest rates now hover over 7%. So it makes it very difficult to move and afford the next home. Therefore, keeping people stable. Also, and the final one, this is a pretty cool place to live. This is a really cool place to live. People don't want to leave. So because of the bottom bullet causes the top bullet, and it cycles. So how scientific is this? Not all that scientific, but there is some good science behind this. And that's why our enrollment is dropping. That's helpful financially, and it will be helpful as we continue through the presentation and we fully understand what's coming. So the district enrollment now by level, still pretty impressive class size. This is projected after reductions, which I'll be talking about. K2 still hovering in the 20s. K3, 5 still hovering in 21s, 22s. 6, 8 extraordinarily good for middle school. And 9, 12, it's, you can't really say, it does not look a number range, but you're looking at probably an average of 25 to 27 per class. And all the administrators have been working on this. The high school, we had a long meeting to go through all of this, and we just keep looking at it over and over again. But that's about where we project to be for next year. So it's important to keep that in mind. I'm gonna give you an example of the elementary, and I want to show you a conundrum that we deal with having seven smaller elementary schools. This is a reality of a district our size. This is not a South Brunswick per se problem, but it is a reality. I didn't use what schools, but these are real numbers for next year. I'm gonna explain, the first column is first grade. The first three columns are first grade. The column all the way to your left is the number of students in that school. The number of sections, meaning if there's 80 students in first grade, there's four first-grade teachers in that class. Therefore, the average class size is 20. If we go down to the next school, we'll see 54 in the class and three sections, they're very low class size of 18. Now, this is first grade. We don't want to see class size of 27. Now, that's what you would do if you cut that three sections to two, it'd be 27 per class in first grade. We really don't want to be near that 27 number for first grade. If it was middle school or high school, we could live with that, but not at first grade. But I will tell you, this is the reality of the districts in the state right now. Many districts would not even be hesitating to cut that third section. And you'd have two, and then just be 27 in the class, and that would be the class, and you move on. We're trying not to do that. The blue represents a class that we're watching where we might close the section. Not a fun thing to do. However, if you look at the school below the 23, you see 46, 223. Below that is 51, 317. Below that is 53, 16.7. Now, just so you know, some of those schools were also expecting more students to come in because there's zone for the new developments. So we also have them low, knowing they'll rise a little bit. But if we look at the, at the school with 23 in the class, we might go up another two kids to make it 24. But then after that, we close the section. And if someone moves into that development, they might be moved to one of the other schools. That is not desirable. It will certainly not be desirable by the parent. But the other options, if you don't do that, is you're gonna have to reduce the class sizes or have incredibly high class sizes for your youngest learners. So we have to watch this. But this is a microcosm of what it looks like at the elementary level. If you look at the second grades, you're seeing four of the schools hovering at 23s and 24s. But look at the other ones. Again, we'd be looking at 38 students at the bottom one. If you don't have two sections, you have one section. You'd have a class of 38. So instead, we have two. But if you had, if there's a magic way to put all of those grades in one school, so one school of just first grade, you'd be able to manage this much better. Now, I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm just saying, that's what happens when you have seven places to send the same age student, which is normal, not weird. But this is our dilemma in elementary. The reductions we've made in elementary next year are all due to this, and this is about what our class size looks like across all the grades. This is not something to complain about. This is the reality of a lower enrollment. Not a reality of staff we don't want, but you can't just have things that are not gonna get us the things you need. Now, small class size is better than larger class size, but there has to be a standard. And when there's financial woes, I'm gonna be honest with you. I've kept this class size as low as I can keep it for as long as I can keep it. Not by accident. It's been done on purpose, very blatantly. We're just at the point where I can't do it anymore. Can't. And that's gonna have implications. But this is where we need to go, and this is not bad. I describe it as we went from excellent to good, not from good to bad. So the impact is gonna be class size, staff impact relative to class size and enrollment. And I just shared with you about the closing the sections. We might do that on those blue sections. We are still prioritizing the realities of behavior, the behavior of students. And we could probably sit and talk about why it's different, but I don't know of any school superintendent I've spoken to that doesn't describe the exact same issue in their districts as well. None of these things are South Brunswick related, but we have challenging behaviors that we did not have in the past. We are working to limit the human loss by making decisions we can, when we can, to match someone that's leaving the district to an opening. We're trying to do that. We are not 100% successful. We're still working it through. And unfortunately, we won't be successful at limiting, reducing disruption, at stopping disruption, but we are trying to limit it. And you do that through making decisions that might seem logical but have significant negative impact on the disruption side. And so when we have to make a choice of A or B and they're equal, we do look for which one is less disruptive. And that's where we are with elementary. But I want to share, I shared this yesterday with the elementary faculty as well. I want us to remember some things we've done. So for example, academic coaches, these are people that help teachers become better teachers. That's their job. We've increased that from 1 to 8 since 2017. That's, I know, 800% increase on that one line. We've added behaviorists, people that support teachers and administrators and the best ideas on how to help kids with their behavior challenges. We've added greatly, I think three times since 2017. We've added instructional support staff who work with our struggling learners. We've added guidance counselors at all the levels, but at elementary, we may, we had some part-time guidance counselors that are all full-time. We're adding special education programming specifically. We've added the RISES program, very successful program. Where's Jamie? She still here? And Stacy's there? Yeah. And where's Ajou? Those three were all part of the administration team. And is Raf still here? No Raf? He gets no credit. That has been a very successful program, very expensive program. Very expensive. But I'm gonna tell you why that's okay. And we've maintained excellent class size. So in the heart of all of this challenge with fiscal, we've tried to put the money where it needed to go to support our kids. That's what we try to do. Can we cut all of those things? We could cut all of those things. And my fear for our district in the coming years is that's gonna be where we're targeted because we're not gonna have room anywhere else. Because the enrollment is gonna level, and then it's gonna rise. And then you don't have the enrollment to play with, and you're gonna be looking at massive class sizes and loss if nothing changes. So here's middle school. A little complicated chart, but I want you to focus on the 7th and 8th grade where it says projected south. Look at 7th and 8th grade. So in 7th and 8th grade, those classes combine and we mix the kids together. So together, the 7th and 8th grade are projected to have 529 students. There are currently six five-person teams. If we leave all six teams, the class size in middle school will be 17s and 18s. While that's awesome, and I know our middle school teachers would love that, we can't afford it. So that's six. Between 529 and 1763 is gonna become a five. I mean, that's five staff members in one school. Go down to north. Pickett, you can cut in the 6th grade and make the 17.8s, 26s, or the 627s, 25s. But there's another team cut there. That's 10 staff there. That's horrible for our system to have to keep doing this is just so disruptive and debilitating for all the people involved. Even if you know that you're safe and you're not one of the people, you might get moved. You might have to teach a different, a different level, a different school. That's what's happening right now when everyone is on eggshells trying to manage their own psyche, knowing this is, again, every year. Do it again, same thing. Now, again, this is enrollment. This isn't people doing bad stuff. It's just, it's still very difficult. It's very difficult. High school impact. I can't really show the same way, but we're looking between 25, 26s, 27s in the class. Some classes go as high as a little over 30, and for some reason, some of them are in the teens. Just because of the way the high school is designed, certain programs don't have more than 15 or 16 or 17 to stay in a course of study. So that's what happens. But when there's a class like in, and some classes we keep low because English, let's say, the academic English where we have inclusion programs, so special needs students mixed with regular education students, we try to keep those classes low. But honors classes, AP classes, they're on the higher side. But that's, so it's hard to kind of describe the full monty of high school, but that's the generality. There is a staff impact. All relative to class size. We didn't really do any, we didn't cut programs or anything, but we did look at the class size and the impact. Course enrollment, if there was a course that maybe in a previous year we would have run with 12 students, we're not running that course this year. That's one of the big changes. So if we don't have the numbers, we're just not running the course. There's a long list of courses. I think it's about 15 to 17 courses that we're not running. We didn't remove the courses or, or we just didn't collapse them. We're just not running them this year. If the interest changes next year, they'll still be on the list. If the interest changes, we can always go back to run them again the next year. This is a big change. Normally, a kid who drops a class or wants to make a change goes to guidance council, they can make a change. That's gonna be limited. We're not gonna have the room because we're gonna close sections. We're just closing the classes. And I'm saying this out loud, so anybody watching this, a parent who's upset about that, it's, they're not gonna win the argument. And I hate to say it that way and be so blunt about it, but they're not gonna win the argument. We have to manage this financially. Or if we don't, we start to lose programs altogether. We have to be able to say, you took a class, you can still change your class to one of the classes we have opening, but if we have to close a class due to class size, we have to close a class. The same issue is gonna be, as I mentioned, elementary, even worse if you have to move a school. We're gonna really try not to have that happen, but there could be times when that does happen. We want to just warn the board now, those are the kind of things that parents have a right to be extremely upset about. But you can't have everything. We have a lot. Can't have everything. Same issue we said about the elementary in the middle. We're gonna work to try and have attrition be the openings, not people losing their jobs. But I know we're not gonna be But I know we're not going to be perfect at this. There's going to be job loss, and we hate that. I'm done doing it. And I'm telling you, it's too many years of doing this every year. It's ridiculous. Every single year, we're doing the same thing. We still prioritize keeping programs open, even if we have to reduce the size of a program, but we're not looking to shut down programs. And we don't want to lose our supports for our kids. Mental health support is a gigantic issue in the high school and the middle school, probably in elementary, in our staff. We, you just can't cut it because the money is not, you have to figure out ways to save these things. So, you know, this is the crux of what the schools are about, right? And that's what we're trying to save. So the overall staffing impact, is this a repeat slide? All right. That's the number. We're at 40 positions, not 40 people, 40 positions. That's just awful. That's where we are. And not all these positions are enrollment-based. Most of them are. Most of them are class size and enrollment, but that wasn't enough. That wasn't enough money, so we had to go a little deeper. And to be honest, I'm 600,000 short still. The next 600,000 are heavy hitter cuts, but that's where we are. This is the problem. So the money associated with the enrollment reductions, that got us to a point. It didn't get us to 3.6 million. And the prediction for next year is you're not going to have the enrollment cuts. If you don't do everything in your power, the next year, like this year would have been if we didn't do it last year, your cuts wouldn't be manageable cuts. You're going to be hitting direct programs. We would have been there, again, remember, we would be there if you did not act last year. I would be talking about $6 million worth of pure program cuts. And that's what you're seeing in the newspapers. That's what you're seeing schools talking about selling off buildings. That's what you're seeing with class sizes of 40. We're trying to make sure we never get to that spot. And we're going to tell you that you have an option this year. Again, which completely unexpected. We still didn't understand how, but we'll talk about it shortly. With all this, we still try to do new and better things for our kids. We don't have a lot, but what we do, we try to make the most of. I talked about the ERI program at Brooks Crossing, a new special ed program. We're looking to expand it next year to the middle school. It's expensive, but well worth it. We'll get through that shortly. We are doing an elementary academic screening program so we can learn about our kids at the earliest levels so we can make the best decisions and support them in the best ways. And another great opportunity, inexpensive, to get mental health supports directly to our families and kids. It's very difficult to find mental health supports for pediatric. This program for only $32,000 is incredible amount of resources. I've just listed all of the newness for next year. In a $161 million budget, I just listed all the newness. That's sad. But I want to talk about the positive parts of it. The RISES program is currently at Brooks Crossing. That program, that's the title of it, and it is basically an emotional regulation impairment program, formerly for students that really struggle with behavior to the point that a regular education class cannot really meet the child's needs in a regular education class. In years past, students with this kind of behavior need would be sent out of district at a cost somewhere of between $50,000 and $100,000 per student. So Raphael and his team came up with a plan to build our own model, and it has been incredibly successful. That's currently at the elementary level. This is where it costs a lot of money. It includes all of those things, and they're all expensive things. And it's not for that many kids. But what this does, it helps the whole district. Because if you're supporting the students with the most severe behavioral challenges in a setting where they can get the support they need, the district benefits by everyone having an ability to keep moving forward while those students are getting their supports. Because when you have significant behavioral challenges, it can be very disruptive for other classrooms. So this has been an outstanding plan. It's been, it was a rough start. Jamie, would you agree? She's giggling if you didn't see. Rough start, rough start. And then it started going. And now we're in our second year, very effective, and we want to make it another year. So this is the success. So one student was transitioned out. Two students returned. Remember the placements I said that cost $50,000 or $100,000? Two of them came back, so now they're in the classrooms. Five students mainstream for different subject matters. But look at the net last number. We have six paying customers. Six students from other districts pay to have their kids come to our district for that program. Those six students, I think, pay about $40,000 apiece. That's quarter of a million dollars to start helping fund that program. So that's massive success. That's after two years. And I think they closed, do we close acceptance, Jamie? Are we not, are we closed for business? I think so. I think we're capped. So, you know, this is pretty incredible after two years to be at this stage. So we had good success. Let's expand on it. Let's bring it to the middle school. And our plan is to do that, maintain four of the students, enhance the services. The four students are two current tuition students. We want to maintain those four, and then we'll be able to open the door in the middle school for more. Returning two students, Row D, this is fantastic stuff. So if we can get two more students back, eventually, this program kind of pays for itself, but it's an expensive, I think I budgeted an extra $300,000 just for this program for next year, for the middle school. Now, that'll get offset, but I can't budget that way. So right now, it's just a plus in the plus column. So other things that we want to make clear that we still have, like we're still, we still are doing great things. We still have good class size. We have all the extracurriculars. We have all the athletics. Our music program is still beyond extensive, beyond extensive and beyond expensive. Amazing mental health supports, behavioral supports. All of our AP courses are intact. We have program continuity where we didn't cut programs in the middle. You're allowed to keep moving forward. And a lot of academic supports at K-8. So, you know, and we do a supportive administrative structure. To do all these things, someone's got to run it. But that's what we still have in the district. Even after all this, we're still here. But we have a lot of fiscal challenges, and these are some big ones. So district health, health is the word that David, this is, David has to run the budget, and the budget is not healthy at all. In fact, it's very unhealthy. And at this point, we really shouldn't be spending another dollar for the rest of this year outside of what we already, including salaries, benefit costs, called encumbered funds. We shouldn't be spending a dollar. And David's going to have to be, you're going to be talking to admin soon about this. And this is going to be a hard cutoff, and that's not going to feel good for anybody. But if we don't stay healthy, it has a negative effect the following year. And we don't want to do that. I don't even want to say anything, but what else could I say about it? That's a concern. It's not going to ever stop being a concern, I don't think. But here is a tough one. I'm going to go through this in a little more detail, but this is very difficult for our district right now. And this is the one we're going to talk more about tonight. We have avoided doing this to keep everything else intact. Last year, the money we received and the extra money that you guys voted to do, thank you, went to saving staff and programs and towards health of the district budget. We did not put it towards the facilities. And just like your house, every year or your car, every year you don't take care of it, you know, it costs more to fix the problem the second year than it would have cost if you just fixed it the first year. And we're getting to that place where we're kind of, we have no real choice at this point in a couple of our areas. Talk more about that in a second. We want to still maintain programs, and that's going to be tougher and tougher, and class size is going to be tougher and tougher, all of the need to do the redistricting, reconfiguring conversations and study that's happening right now. And again, you'll be getting a recommendation from that committee in January of '26 to implement, to make a decision about and implement for the following school year. That's September 26, not September 25. And this is a conundrum, what we don't even understand yet. Is there going to be, is there going to be a change? Are we going to lose federal funding? Are we not? We don't know. But to not at least acknowledge that it's possible would be irresponsible. So that is a possibility, and that could happen at any given time. There's no timeframe on when we'll find that out. We could find that out tomorrow. We could find that out September 1st. We don't know. So those are our tennis courts, first little project we want to talk about. So all of our tennis courts look like that. Now, you can play on those courts, but not really great. But if you don't fix it, those cracks are going to get more and wider and bigger and eventually become actually a safety issue, not just a playability issue. Now, this is not that expensive a project. It's quarter of a million dollars to do this project. But we have six courts at the high school, and they all look like that. Now, I know we'd say, well, let's leave that and, you know, do more with the staff and do more with that. We can't do everything. There's a point where you can't. And we did all we could do with the staffing side last year. We did all we could do. And the majority of the reductions this year are still enrollment-based and good class sizes that have excellent class size base, the majority. So we have to recommend, we have to put them into facilities. You have 14 buildings that have to be cared for. It is the reality of it. Dave, you want to explain the solar panel?
So in 2017, '18, the district participated in an ESIP program that placed solar panels on rooftops throughout the district. One of the buildings that, and we inherited, I think we started in '17, and we were behind schedule, so we put solar up as fast as possible. One of the district rooftops at Crossroads South had a design where they didn't really assess the roof before they put the solar panels on and attached them. What you're looking at on the picture on the left is a solar panel system that has about 1,000 through holes or penetrations through the rooftop, and they're bolted inside from outside and holding these brackets down, and the solar panels are connected to the brackets. Over the course of time, the wind blows, the solar panels move, they shift around, the caulk gets older and brittle, and now we have water penetration all throughout the entire rooftop at Crossroads South. The other issue with Crossroads South roof is you see the kind of brown or off-colored long stripe going right across the top of the solar panels. That's actually a skylight. And in, that's what the skylight looks like from inside the gymnasium. So one of our guys there standing with a big barrel collecting water. But that skylight is like a corrugated fiberglass. This roof is original to Crossroads South. And you can see on the picture on the left, that fiberglass has just deteriorated over time. When the solar guys were up there putting solar, installing the solar panels, they walked on it and caused some areas to be, you know, damaged. And we also have water penetration through these corrugated panels that run the entire length of the high school, or excuse me, the South's gymnasium, you know, rooftop. So what's happening now is we've known about this for a good three years, and we've constantly just kind of put it off to the side. We didn't want to get involved with it. It was, in this scenario, because of the way the solar works, we're responsible, the district's responsible for the removal of the solar. We're responsible for the loss of solar generation to the company that manages the solar. And we're also responsible for the replacing or putting the solar back on the roof. So that contract was, you know, signed, sealed, and delivered back in 2018, '19, when this, '18, when this project was complete, which is a standard contract. It's not anything different. Any other district that has solar and has been through an ESIP has the same type of contract. So we're at a point now, you know, three or four years ago, this project was a $2.2 million job. This year, it's on our docket for a $4 million job. So one of the things we're running into across the district is every project that we're taking on, that we put to sleep three years ago, is now 50 to 60% more. And we're just at a point where we're either going to damage the gymnasium floor and we're going to have to replace a classic wood floor at Crossroads South, or we're going, and in addition to the rooftop, or we're going to have to replace the rooftop and save the gymnasium floor. So that's the kind of situation we're seeing across the district. We have windows at Crossroads South that have been put to sleep for, since 2017. In 2017, that project was $2.3 million. Today, we have quotes coming in for window replacement at Crossroads South that hover around a $5 million mark. So every, everything with regards to construction has just gone through the roof over the course of the past five, six years, and we're at a spot. You know, when we talk about the health of our infrastructure or the health of our buildings, it's just not in a great place right now. So that's it.
Thanks, sir. So now I want to talk specifically about the other one. So now we have unknown enrollment impact, semi-known locations in an unknown amount of time. This is very difficult to budget for. So this is what we have as far as building that's scheduled or on the docket. Some more than others are moving forward. The next slide, it's a little fuzzy. I couldn't unfuzzy it. But right now, there are 3,177 units that are slated. There's also another 230 that are potential to be on this list. That's 3,400 homes, residences. Of all of those 3,400, only 90 are single family. All the other ones are apartments and condos. Townhouses, that's it. 90 single family. So when we look at this, we work with the township to try and determine what the impact should be and about when. It hasn't exactly been rocket science in the way of getting that information, but we do have an idea. And I'm sorry for the fuzziness. But the three that are circled on the left are the three that are currently in construction with the bottom one that's circled already sending students to the district. That particular one, which is the one behind 4 Executive Drive off of Route 1, Northumberland Way, that one, we're expecting another, or a total of almost over 400 homes occupied during the next school year. Then you have about another 300. There's a development on Henderson Road, and there's a development by Shocks Crossing on Ridge Road. So a right turn out of the high school. Before you get to the light, if you look to your left, that's all South Brunswick, and that's moving. Jill, our director of transportation, who is the ultimate guru of all things building, she already drove by. She has already received calls. We will have students starting in September from the Shocks Crossing area. We are positive of that. We are positive we will have students coming because the entire development of 177 homes on Henderson Road will be built and occupied before the end of next school year. The thing is, when, how many kids will be coming? We have formulas, but formulas are just formulas. There's no guarantees. If everybody moves into those houses with school-aged children, we'll be hit with a great deal of students. If it yields the way it normally does, we will get students that are already factored in to the enrollment projections. So in other words, since we know what we know, So in other words, since we know what we know, we're able to factor those numbers in, and those are already built into those numbers we showed you already. So for example, all of those developments currently are slated to go to South, not North for Crossroads, because South has room. North is almost at capacity. South has dropped many, many students, so they're going to build back up again. So we've said it, designed it to manage this. However, it takes us off our normal track. Our normal track would have those schools go, some going to North, depending on where they were. Again, redistricting is a necessity. You're not going to have a choice to do something. Because eventually, you can't have 1,700 homes of students go to Brooks Crossing along with all the other homes that already go to Brooks Crossing. You won't be able to do that. So we're looking at all this. Right now, you see a bunch of other zeros. At any given point, one of those zeros might become a number. And if that happens, then we have to start factoring in those students as well. Unknown. We kind of have an idea that we're using the best we can, but it's not, this is not a perfect science. But as those numbers get bigger and bigger, remember, the enrollment reduction will, will stop, and you'll get flat for a little while. I predict we're kind of flat for next year to a degree. But where we have movement is, to give you a full example, there are about, I think it's 660, 670 from the high school in the senior, in the 12th grade, and we only have 400 kindergartners right now. That's a massive difference. Now, the high school has, since I've been here, the high school, one, one year graduated 789 students in one graduating class. So they're now all 600s now. So the high school is down about 350 to 400 kids. That's where we're seeing the, the impact at the high school level. Elementary is going to start to stable off soon. That's how we look at it. And South will continue to grow. That's pretty much what we're expecting over the next few years. Ultimately, it's 3,177 new residences that are on the books, and that other 234 that we're told could be added to the list. Back to why there has to be a configuration and a redistricting study. The 63% of the 3,100 units currently are slated to go to Brooks Crossing. It's not going to work. So that alone causes the district to have to relook. But if you can see that number four, that's a big, big area. That's the 1,700 units. But they're all over the place, and they're not going to fit nicely into a box. So that's just a general understanding of what we're facing. And that's important because you can't think one year at a time. You have to think projections. You have to think where you're going to be financially in two or three years. And once you stop losing students, it's extremely expensive. Because the, the way the formula is, the formula takes a six-year average of your enrollment. So you don't get a big gigantic dip when you lose, but you don't get a big hit when you gain. So we might go two or three years before we really see any increase in state aid as a result of the numbers. Even though you're already getting the kids, that's just the way the formula works. One of the more wonderful things about the formula. So now it's the money. So we received word, we don't know how, we don't know what magical powers existed at Department of Ed to create this, but they put out a letter to districts like us, 300 districts apparently, where you can now use a tax incentive aid. Okay, here's what it is. Districts are being told we could go all the way to adequacy. For our district, that means we're $5.1 million under adequacy, which means we are allowed to collect up to $5.1 million above the 2% and the waiver. We're allowed to do that. There's no bill, there's no rule that we even understand as to why, or how, or who, but we're not going to fight this one. It's bizarre. The people that we've been working with in legislation, they have no idea about this. In fact, we told them, they didn't even know what it was. That's concerning to us, because that could be a problem. But as of right now, it's not a problem. So we're presenting it to you. The state is going to be very generous, however, and for every million dollars you raise, they will give you $50,000 more dollars. I know, very generous. So even if you raised all the money you're allowed to raise, you still wouldn't make up for your, a quarter of your state aid loss. So pretty much, this is it. This is the rule. We're going to show you what this rule looks like in math, with the math, and we'll go from there. So here's the important thing to remember, and we really want to hammer this home. Those are the last five years of tax impact in, including a projection of next year's 3.51%. So if we do the 3.51%, and you look at what we did last year, and then the three years before, a five-year average, the average home is paid only $42 a year over a five-year average. Still unheard of. No one wants to pay more taxes, but $42 a year, that's pretty impressive. So now we want to show you what happens with all the numbers that are possible. So the 2% is orange. If you go up 2% this year, just the 2%, there's a tax impact that we did not expect to happen. In fact, we expected a tax decrease of 2% this year. What happened out of this district's control are the ratables. You've heard me talk about the ratables over the years. The ratables are now horrible for some reason. No idea why. It doesn't actually make any sense that they're horrible, because the state aid formula said you got so much more, you got 15% more wealthy this year. So if the district got 15% more wealthy, where's the money? We don't know. We have no control over this. So even at a 2% increase, the tax impact for next year will be 176. The full 3.51 brings it to 227. So as you can see, these aren't massive increased numbers from one number to the next number, but you are allowed by this tax incentive aid to go to 7.29%. That is the total number. So we wanted you to see each million. After the 3.51%, which is your 2% plus your $2 million waiver for healthcare, which we talked about, that's the 3.51%. You are then allowed to go up a million more, up to 5.1 million. That's the way that it reads, that's how it's in the formula. So we wanted to show you what that looks like. We also want to show you, so you can look, if you go up another million to the 4.27, you're at 253. So you can see, it's about $25 a million. That's about what it comes. So now we want to show you this chart. This is a five-year average. If you took any of the others in green, those are the numbers you're allowed to take, 3.51, then go up a million each time. So even if you went all the way to the top, well, no one is going to like having an increase in their taxes. Nobody. I still believe this town would prefer, I don't know if I'm right, to not have your schools go down the tubes, or have your roofs start falling in. I think a roof just fell in somewhere in our, in our country. Didn't a roof just fall in?
Yes.
Killed like 16 people? I'm not saying our roofs are that bad. That was a little dramatic, but you know. The average is all the way to the right. So if you went 3.51%, your average over the five years would be a $68 increase over the five years, each year, not per month. If you went all the way to 6.53%, that's $4 million, your average would be $89. That's the reality, meaning no one complains or comes out and tells you how wonderful you were when they got $90 decreases, or even bigger decreases in years prior, because that was good news. But I say this, and I say this a lot. The board, the community, anyone who cares about schools has to make a decision. And the decision is simple. Do you want to fund schools, or do you want us to stop doing stuff? That is the only choice. There is no magical answer to the finances of schools. Either stop doing stuff and tell me what you want that to be, stop fixing the roofs, stop teaching certain things, stop offering certain things, or we fund our schools. I honestly did not expect to be up here this year with this option at all. If we stick with the 3.51, I have to cut $600,000 more out of staffing. That will all be painful, it'll be programming, and you will not fix anything. We'll be back here next year. You will need to find probably somewhere between $3.5 to $6 million, hard to tell just yet. And you will still need the roofs to be fixed. You will have nothing left to cut, because you've cut it all already, and every single dollar you cut will be programming. This is a gift. I don't even know why, how it's a gift, or how it's legal, but I'm not the one who created it, so I'm going to assume it's legal. We're encouraging the board tonight to pick a number close to the bottom of that chart. Either the very bottom, or right near the very bottom. Tonight, the state told us we have to have a resolution. Now, that's not a final answer. The final answer is May 1st. But we have to pass a resolution in order to access anything above the 3.51%. That's what we have to do tonight. We have no choice if we want to do that. So we are asking you to have a discussion tonight, and eventually, we have to make a decision if we're going to move forward with a resolution to go somewhere above 3.51%. Again, not our doing, this is the way it is. We think it's pretty horrible that they just keep shackling Boards of Education with this in districts like ours, while other districts next door to us don't even have to have these conversations. They have spending parties instead.
And no understanding this is going to occur next year.
Yeah, but you saw, Dave just said, and no understanding what's coming next. Remember, you've heard me say, this is going to be every school district. And this year, you're seeing it all over the place now, because districts aren't preparing for it. They're not expecting to really understand what happens with a 2% cap, and you don't get free money. We're good at it by now. Not a thing I want to be good at, but we're good at it. But this is all still very problematic, and we were saved last year, we have an opportunity to be saved again. Unfortunately, it's just a question. You want the schools to do what they can do, or you want us to do less? Because there's no other answer. There's no other magical button to press. With that, this is what we're looking at. This is the 3.51% snapshot. The local tax levy would be 136.9. Anything above that, it would either go to 137.9, 138, 139, or 140, or 141. That's pretty much your options right now. This is what you need to understand, is I think what people are most concerned about is what is the impact to the taxpayer? And this is kind of where we are. David and I have a recommendation for the board to consider, which is not going for the max. We went to the max last time, even though the community did not seem to have too much of a problem. No one came out to, to say it was a problem, other than a few people, which we understand. And I'm sure the people that didn't come out still didn't like getting a tax increase. But we think we can do the job we need, we can fix the roof, we could fix the tennis courts, we can not cut anymore, maybe even look a little bit and see what we cut and see if we can put something back. And that would be 6.53% is our recommendation, to get an extra $4 million for next year. That is what we're asking the board to consider. However, we've made that statement, now it really is for the board to have a discussion tonight, and Dave will have a resolution for the board to consider. And again, the resolution is not permanent, it's as part of this process from the state, and then May 1st is the real time where the board would vote on whether or not that is what you're going to finally do. That's how it works. We did not have to call a special meeting, because we already had a board meeting tonight. Other districts would have had to call special meetings if they had a board meeting after April 14th. That's the deadline for this, April 14th. And obviously, it's a weird deadline in schools, because half the school districts have spring break during that week. But again, that wasn't really part of the state's thinking, I guess. So before you go into discussion, Dave and I can answer any questions that you have.
You spoke about the adequacy. Which office did that give, give you the adequacy number that we?
So the adequacy number comes from the formula. So the same formula that tells us we're rich and we shouldn't have any money, tells us we should be getting all the money from the town, 166 million. That's what the formula says. At the same time it says that, it says we're not spending enough money. That same formula says you're spending $5.1 million less than you should be spending, which is why they're letting districts go get the money, so they're spending the right amount. That's their perspective. That's the Department of Education, though.
Is there a way to find out where we have gone richer? Isn't it the community says that South Brunswick has gone richer? Where is the tax money going to, or where is it? Why can't we find, find it?
So the, the numbers used in the formula are the income tax for South Brunswick, as well as the property values. Now, the property values in South Brunswick is a very skewed number. Barry's been here, how many years?
25. I've been in town 35 years.
So Barry said 60 years he's been here. So in those 60 years, Barry, did you ever see us reassess? No one even knows the last time this district, this state, this township reassessed. So because of that, we can't get real information on the value of the property. The average house is valued at $200,000 in South Brunswick. So where the money goes, unfortunately, we have nothing to do with the ratables, the collection of taxes. We only control the part that we control. The formula, we've tried to get more information about that, we haven't been very successful. As far as the ratables go, it's hard to understand how the formula said we, all of a sudden became worth 15% more, but the ratables show a decline, not that the ratables are, went down, they went down from the numbers we normally look at, when we didn't have such high impact on the local fair share. We've had ratables over $100 million, and the local fair share didn't go up that much money. So we, we don't understand it. I don't know how to answer the question, Rajah, of where. We've spoke, we speak to the town, we've asked questions. I don't know if they can answer that question or not, but we can try and ask them again and see, why did the ratables go down? Maybe they have an answer.
Okay, so 6.53, you say, is your recommendation?
Yes.
What is the impact to each household on a yearly?
Each household, over the course of a five-year average, the last four years plus this year, would be $89 on average. For this coming year, it'd be $332.
So this year, it's going to go up by $332?
I just want to make it clear, if you can, please. We normally would recommend a 2%.
Yes.
Right? To get to the health waiver, we want 3, we want the 3.5, so we can get that health waiver.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So if, if my calculations are correct, if we went from 2% to 6.53%, where am I here?
The difference of $154.
Thank you, so, I'm sorry, 100 and?
$154 difference.
So $154 in addition, if we went to the 2%, correct?
2% would be 176.
Right. So I just want to make it clear that we're, we're talking really about that $200, correct? Because we would probably, I would vote, I can only speak for myself.
Just Lisa, $154.
$154. So we would want that 2%, we would want the 3.5% because we're getting the waiver. So if we go from 3.5 to the 330, you know, you're talking less, you know, a little bit of $100, $103 extra. So is that correct?
That's all correct.
If I did that right. So we're talking $103 extra in tax impact to each household from going from 3.5 to 6.3?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
No other questions here?
So my question, what, I was thinking along the lines?
Into the mic, now, Mike.
I was thinking along the lines of 6.53 myself. However, what steered, steered you away from 5.78?
It's a million dollars less.
Okay.
So the roof is $4 million. So we have money in the reserves, but not enough to handle what we need to do. We're $600,000 still short on 3.6 million.
Okay.
So 4 million would allow David to spend probably about $2 million specifically. So 4 million would allow David to spend probably about 2 million specifically on the roof, get a little healthier because our fund balance is too high and getting now a little technical. I would not have to cut anymore. Maybe even take a few of the cuts back and keep us healthy, deal with our roof, and be able to be solvent at least for another year.
I would just interject that this tax incentive plan, wherever this came from, wherever this plan came from, or wherever this opportunity came from, this opportunity might not exist next year. This whole idea of being able to add to your tax base may not exist next year. So next year, when we're standing here, we're talking about only being able to do a 2%.
Possibly.
Possibly. There might not be a healthcare waiver next year. This opportunity might not exist next year. So next year, when we talk about where we are with budget, we could be in a situation where it's 2% with no other options. You could be.
But we don't know. We said last year, and I feel bad, we said last year, that was only a one-shot thing too. So we don't know. This is the problem. It's so hard to run $161 million business with the unknowns of this magnitude year after year. So I guess we look at it as you take what you can get to get yourself solvent. As Lisa's point, it's another 100 or another $150, which is not, I'm not saying only, it's not good, but that's where we are. Rajesh had something before?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And actually, Julie was up before.
I'm just curious, in terms of our student reduction, you know, how that impacts the budget? Are you looking at that for this year or the reduction in student enrollment for next year? I'm curious, if you're setting this budget, it's impacting, do you think student enrollment is impacting your budget decisions?
The whole first part of the presentation was all about enrollment reduction.
Yeah.
All of those reductions, all those first slides, that was all anticipating increasing class size and hitting where the enrollment reductions are.
Okay. So have we done a line item on like student reductions for students who are going out of district to other schools? Do we have information on that?
Yeah, we don't have much of that. That isn't really a...
Can you give like a ballpark figure?
Inconsequential.
Well, that's not a ballpark figure.
No, it is. I don't know the percentage, but the number is not a number that's causing the enrollment decline. In other words, we can see how many more kids go to charter schools, and that's not a higher number for not, I mean, it's a little bit each year, sometimes, it goes down sometimes. So that number has been relatively static year after year. And we're not seeing our kids leave from eighth grade to go to another high school. We do have kids, but nothing different or, it's not really the causation of the enrollment decline.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Rajesh?
So if I summarize, and I may oversimplify, so correct me, what we are saying is, the proposal, you already worked out an opportunity for 40 positions, and since we are 3.6 down to start with, and that will be sufficient to run for this year.
Yes.
However, we do have some of the capital expenses. And what we are seeing is the proposed increase, so the community is going to get in return for that additional $100, $150 is a roof to crossroads out. And basically...
And tennis courts.
And tennis courts.
For next year.
For kids.
But that's only Rajesh, because those are the only ones we can afford right now. We need other roofs. We have other needs. We have to be realistic to afford what we can afford. So to your point, the extra money, if I'm reflective listening, will allow us to not cut further than 40 positions, maybe even knock that down a couple positions, and get us a roof, which we need, and get us tennis courts, which are only going to get worse at an exponential rate if we don't fix them.
So, but again, this is just to kind of understand what community is getting in return, or what people will get in return if we go ahead with this.
Yes. Thank you for that. Lisa, then, Raja.
Raj, go ahead. No, go, please.
Okay, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So what Dave explained is that indicative of the thing that if we don't have, if the choice is not going to be available next year, is it indicative that the board should try and go towards the full amount extent of this of 7.29% so that we can secure whatever is there already and cater for any downfall next year?
Yeah, you know, what we wish they would do is to do the same thing that they should have done three years ago and say, you have three years to get this money. They should say, a reasonable thing for boards of education to manage, which is not make you go to 9% one year and then 7% the next year. They could have done this in a way, but they're not doing it that way. They're hitting us with last-minute rules. The last one came after the last minute, last time. It was after, we were already done and we had to redo it, if you remember. We had to re-adopt the budget in July. This time, it's right under the wire. Here's another opportunity. And if you don't use it all now, you're not getting it again. That's what they tell us. So we don't know if this, Dave's point is, we don't know. We can't predict. We don't know what to do. So if we don't take advantage, you could be left in far worse like last year. Remember last year? Remember before we got the money? Where we were? That's where you're going to be next year if we don't do this and they don't offer something next year. And it's horrible. It really is. This should be a, it should be, guys, you're $5 million under budget. You have two years or three years to get up to adequacy. So you're not damaging one big year of hits after hits. Last year, we were very lucky. The amount of money that that was, because of the ratables, didn't have a significant impact to taxes. This year, the ratables aren't as good. It's a worse impact with less money. Things, all of these factors are completely out of our control. But yes, Raja, the answer to your question is, yes. I think, David thinks, you should go get as much as you can when the availability is there because your schools, you fund the schools. That's what makes your homes valuable. Your schools go down, South Brunswick goes with it. That is the reality of this area of New Jersey. That's my input.
Thank you.
I just want to dovetail off of what Rajesh has said. If we do go to that 7.9%, that extra million?
The extra million, 7.29.
What is your recommendation as to what we would do with that extra million?
To be honest, I'd give it to Dave to put and get those coffers back where they need to be. Your fund balance is too high. You're carrying over too much money every year. You need to bring that down.
Can you maybe pour the...
Yeah, so your reserve accounts, after we do the roof, even with the 4 million, our reserve accounts are going to be very, very, very low.
Very low.
So your rainy day funds are in trouble. So they're already in trouble, but we, you know, we have more things that still have to be done. But I think for one year, to be honest, you have to have a healthy budget. It can't be this scraping the bottom of the barrel every year and being back to reductions, reductions, reductions. I'd rather be saying, hey, we don't need, and this is what the other districts are able to do that have been getting money. So we have enrollment reduction. Instead of cutting staff, I'd be reallocating those resources to do better things for kids. We can't even have those conversations. In fact, we have no conversations about how to be better. None. We don't talk about it because it's so frustrating to think about, hey, there's this great thing if we did this. We can't have those conversations. It's, so yes, if it was 10%, I'd probably be telling you to go to 10%. But I'm also realistic.
So going to the full, to me, getting the roof on South is a non-negotiable. That thing is going to cave in and we're going to go from 4 million to 14 million. I mean, we don't have a choice. We have to do that. That's 4 million right off the top of the bat. Can we kind of bypass the tennis courts? Probably, but it would be a stupid move. So then, we'll go from what we're paying now to quadruple when we wait a year or two, and we might not have the money to do that. And then, it's going to be, we're totally going to have to gut those things. Now, Dave, correct me if I'm right, or if I'm wrong, over here if I'm wrong. The roof at South is the original roof.
Yes.
So we, before you guys came, they made the decision to put solar panels, drill all these holes in our original 55-year-old roof.
Yes.
Good move on their part.
Right.
It was kind of smart.
When we took over in 2017, the ESIP construction, it was, all of those designs were put in place. Within five months, the architect or the energy specialist that designed those systems was no longer allowed on job site.
Good. And when we put these solar panels back on, because right now, we drilled in the roof, correct?
Correct.
And when we get them back on, aren't we kind of doing it differently?
So the clips, the design that's going to replace what's there now has clips that attach to the ridge of a solid metal roof. So there's no penetrations or through holes from the exterior to the interior of the building.
Okay.
Sealed tight.
Let's stay with South. Tell us about the windows in the original two-story portion of South.
Yeah, back in 2017, when I arrived, we had a job that was on the table for 2.3 million to replace those windows. Was tabled just because the next year, we had an increase of state aid the first year, and then the second year, the million hit, and then we got kicked into S2. So that those windows got put to sleep or were just put aside.
Of the HVAC.
Well, yeah, but we also did, at North and South, we did do a HVAC project.
Okay.
We also, I mean, we did a lot of things in the district. We have a robust, we have a robust transportation program with leasing of the buses that saves us a ton of money in parts and maintenance. We designed and put in place an amazing health center that kind of curtails and curbs our healthcare expenses. So we've been doing a lot of these things, the ESIP and the energy savings that we experienced with replacing the HVAC at North and South has driven down our energy costs because of the ESIP. We have a consultant on staff who is under contract. Anytime we do a project like that, they come in and make sure that the project that we're doing adheres to the specs that were in place with our ESIP from 2017 and doesn't take away from our savings but adds to it. So the district, over the course of the past five years, has saved approximately 48% in energy costs just in relation to the ESIP. So we've cut our energy costs in half by doing projects that save the district money in the operating account so that we can continue with the projects and the programs that we have in place for kids. Programs for kids, not projects.
That's awesome. That's awesome. How old are these windows in South?
Originals.
The original windows, so it was before when South was a high school and way back when. So, but we can't, even at the 6.5, that's something we're not even looking at being able to replace now.
Once you get your reserve accounts and your fund balance back under control, and you, you know, right now, we have $161 million operating account. And we're walking around with, you know, $3 million in our savings account. It's like having a checking account with $200 in it, and you're making, you know, $100,000, $200,000, whatever it is, your salary. So we're not in a healthy spot with what is sitting in our, in those savings accounts or those reserve accounts. Once those reserve accounts get rebuilt, then you can, as a board, step back and say, okay, Dave, it's two, we're two years into this. What's it look like? And then, we can put some of those projects on the table. But just know that next year, we're going to be in the same spot. If nothing changes with the funding formula, and we have a 2% cap, or we're in a 2% cap, and we're bringing in three, less than $3 million, and we know we have a 3.5% increase on our salaries, we're already 3.5 million, we're breakeven.
Right.
So, you know, again, we have to realize, this is an ongoing issue that's going to span years. And this is an opportunity for us to try to extend ourselves, get a project done, get our district healthy again financially, put some money in a bank so we can sit back and say, okay, what's our next steps with regards to where we want to go? So yeah, the windows are the next big project. When that can get done, I can't be 100% honest with you.
But I'm just saying that, okay, we'll be looking at that problem fairly soon. And the fair, right? Okay.
Yeah, it's not, that's the next big thing.
Right. So by increasing all the way to 7.29, we're looking at $355.
Laura, I want to tell you, if you go all the way, remember, the state's going to give us an extra $50,000.
Man, you're so generous.
Okay.
So proud.
Don't forget that.
So $355 a year, so spread out for 12 months, I'm...
$30 a month.
Okay. And by doing this, we can get a new roof that we don't, that is a non-negotiable, as far as I'm concerned. Non-negotiable in our middle school. It repairs our tennis courts. It gets our district in a fairly healthy financial situation.
Healthier.
On a pathway back.
On a pathway back. So, okay.
And Laura, and also, I still have to cut $600,000 more if we don't do this.
That's correct. That's right. I forgot about that. Okay.
I'm good with 7.29. I'd be, I'd go home a happy guy.
No, yes, okay.
What do you have for Rajesh, Laura? Hold on a second.
Okay.
Just a question again, a little bit out of the box. Is it possible, because last year, we raised taxes by 8.6%, is it possible the formula changed or increased the local fair share, saying, hey, you were able to raise, so you should raise more?
So no, those two numbers don't help create the formula. The reason the formula pushed our number up is, again, the wealth factors, not how much we actually collect. How much we collected should have closed the gap. But then, last year, and it wasn't just, so how I know it was not us, all the other districts that are in this trouble, they all had the same massive increase to the local fair share out of the blue. Places that never had an increase in local fair share before were hit. They have a multiplier in the formula that we can track that shot up. And is that 2%? There's no explanation. They won't give us the explanation. I don't think you were on the board when this happened. We, not us personally, but we sued the state for the formula. And the judges ruled against the public knowing the formula. That's real. It's proprietary. So there's no explanation that we've been provided, but it wasn't a South Brunswick If that's it, Dave and I will sit down. Are you guys good to discuss? Sorry. Raja, one second. Julie?
You mentioned other districts that have, that are really struggling with their budgets and have had to do things. I know I've heard about Lakewood. You know, I think this is a problem across the board in the state of New Jersey for districts that seem to have lost money from the state. Do you think that, like, that pressure created this little free grab of tax money from the taxpayers?
We do. We actually think that the work we've done, like, because some of the things they created are things that we told them to create. So we've been working on this for years, not just South Brunswick, but other districts as well. So unfortunately, this little thing, as you put it, I like that, this little thing that they gave us, this is exactly what, we use the term adequacy to them and saying, you can't have a formula that tells you you're spending under adequacy and then cap, you know, tie our hands to spend. So they heard that. We didn't ask to have to use the tax money to do it, of course, but that was their solution. But Lakewood's a different story. They give Lakewood an extra, they just gave them an extra $65 million. They haven't done that to anybody else. No other district got extra money. No district. So all the other districts have had to do other things, like Jackson just sold its second building, Toms River just sold a building, Lacey Township has class sizes of 40, Brick has empty classrooms because they have class sizes in the 30s and 40s. So this is just a matter of time, unfortunately, if nothing changes. And we would be, just remember, we would be there right now if last year didn't happen. We would be there today. We, it was a whole different story. And so our fear is you're going to just be here tomorrow if we don't do everything we can do.
So can, can we assume, or can we tell the public in all good consciousness that the 2% tax cap is dead?
No. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that.
Okay, but it seems like that because this is the second year they're going for this, okay, get what, get whatever you want, or get as much as you want.
Well, no, it's not.
As much as you can.
Well, only, remember, only to adequacy.
But only for districts that.
Are under adequacy.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, it's very perplexing.
I don't disagree. Yeah.
So, so can you give us an example of the percentages that other districts?
Yeah, sure. South Plainfield, uh, South Plainfield advertised a 36% increase. Hillsborough has, has said a 20% increase. I know of some other districts, I'm not going to say, but they're in the high teens. We're going to be at a very moderate level, to be honest, of what this would be for the districts that are out there. But yeah, we've seen this high, I've seen two in the 30s, I've seen probably three or four in the 20s, and a bunch in the teens.
So, so even though, you know, 7 point, or 7.29 is not great, it's not horrific.
It's not even close to some of the places.
Not even close to horrific.
Not even close.
And when you say sell buildings, selling schools.
Selling schools.
They're selling schools. They are selling schools because they cannot pay for it.
So mathematically, you closed a school once, you closed Greenbrook.
Right.
You could do that again.
Right.
Not Greenbrook, it's okay, relax.
Don't worry. No panic out there, the mob, mob squad.
It's Mike who should panic, where's Mike? There he is. So it's, it's not, the, the problem is you don't close a building when you have 3,100 homes being built. It's not intelligent. But if that wasn't the case, the district would have to consider not selling it, but coming up with a different plan. You can't do that right now without causing massive chaos, massive disruption, and then have to cause the same level of massive disruption in a few years from now. That's not the way to do it. Now, I don't know all those districts' issues. Middletown proposed they were going to cut, they were going to close two buildings and restructure. Jackson did sell their second building, and it just is the what it is. We don't want to ever be up here telling you that your best option is to sell something.
Right.
Or to close something. I'm good with redistricting, I'm good with restructuring. That's protecting the district. I don't like the idea of selling because then when your enrollment comes back, you're got to go buy. And remember what we said about the cost to fix something? Think of the cost to reopen something, or to have to rebuy something. You just don't want to be in that position. So while it might look good mathematically, and if you didn't have 31 to 30, excuse me, 3,400 homes coming in, we can have a different discussion. But I'm not willing to entertain that with you because it's, it'd be, I don't want to recommend a really bad idea.
Well, I want to clarify myself, I, I don't think it looks good at all.
No, it's bad.
It's a horrible thing, and it's something that we should never, ever have to do.
And this is the, unfortunately, this is the kind of stuff.
Yeah.
That keeps, again, I, I know I'm being a broken record, if you didn't do last year, this, we're, we're not talking 3.6 million in the hole. We're, we're talking a heck of a lot more than 3.6, 6.6 million in the hole, would know where to go, because I would have already cut the 66 positions from last year. Those would have been gone, and you'd still be over $4 to $6 million in the hole right now, and all those positions would be gone. You, you, you're, we're trying to stave off so they can fix this. This is a fix. The, the other part, remember, just keep this in mind, our state aid, they told us we should have lost 2.2 million plus the 645,000. They only took 427,000. We have no idea. No idea if next year, they're going to calculate the state aid minus the 1.8 million. It's the not knowing that makes all of these decisions impossible for boards and for, and for administration to make these recommendations. With the information I have, and we have a lot of good information, we try to get as much information as we can, the board should do this to protect the interest of this town. As much as the town's people, no one wants to pay more taxes, they want their value of their homes to stay up. So our recommendation is go.
Okay. Um, I think right now we have to think about.
Can we have Rajah just one more, and then I'll, then we'll sit down.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rajah, I'm so sorry. You can't be a little quiet with just your finger there, man, you just can't.
I'm sorry. I'd already put my hand, so he knew that I was going to. So Scott, the bottom line is that we need to decide between 330 and 355, which is $25.72 or 73 cents.
Yes.
That is the bottom line.
In my opinion, yes.
In my opinion, too.
I like your opinion.
And I apologize, I'm a little confused. I thought tonight was just voting on the 3.5.
No.
Okay, just wanted to make clear.
We have to pass a resolution.
That's fine.
And in the resolution, they have to put a dollar amount. After that, you vote officially on May 1st.
Got it, okay, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was just.
Is that resolution tentative, or?
Nothing is official until May 1st.
Right.
You vote officially for the public hearing. If you all voted no, we have to go back to a whole drawing board, doesn't matter what you do tonight.
Got it.
The application is due. And that, we have to submit the application.
Submission of a desire to the county, saying we plan to do this, and then.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Well, you, we're gonna, we're gonna, are we good? Thank you, guys.
All right, guys, you, you just kind of, we got to keep in mind that what we're doing tonight, we can't think of, is the cap going to be lifted? Are they going to give us grants? Are we, that, those are so, we can't answer that. So we have to think about, what do we have now? What is before us that we have to make an intelligent decision? We have right now these numbers, and with these numbers, we know we have to fix South. We know we have to look at those tennis courts. We know in the very near future, we have windows at South that are 55 years old. We know that our budget right now is hurting. It is not even close to being healthy. So tonight, we have to decide if, if we want to vote for $355 per a $200, $200,000 assessed home, which you could probably sell for $700, $800,000, to ensure tonight that South is not, the roof's not caving in, that the tennis courts are going to be refixed, and that our budget's going to be a little healthy, and that we're not going to have to chop any more than the 40 positions that are on, on the chopping block right now. That's all we can make the decision. Not what if they give us money? What happened if they lift the cap next year? What? Those are so out there, we can't even consider that.
I think what we also, maybe as a board, if we do get magically some money from somewhere, I think we should make a principle to put that directly in the reserves, capital reserves, not in the operational expense, not in, hey, we got some money, let's just move it, be very diligent about it.
Agreed.
Because we do need to build, and that's probably one David can correct me, I know his finger went up, and he will probably say in which account or which number it goes into, but again, the desire, what I was saying, from anything we get, should just go into reserves somehow, so we start doing it for next year or coming years.
I, I, I agree, I mean.
Dave, is that feasible, or is that dependent on any money that we get could be restricted to go somewhere?
When you, when you pull a, when you pull a tax levy, your tax levy is assigned to your operating account, and then after your operating account, at the end of the year, your surplus is transferable to reserves.
Right.
Levis, the stabilization aid, for example, or anything, something like that, magically that came.
I have one last question. Is it not feasible to do a separate tax question to the public for the capital improvements and then keep a lower interest increase on our taxpayers?
Julie, if that gets turned down, we're, that's, it's dead in the water. If we put, if we put a question on there and it gets voted down, let's say we, we just, since we're talking about South so much, i- if we put on there to increase, you know, get the money to fix the windows in South and it gets voted down, we can't bring that up again. There, South is out of luck. It is way too risky to do that.
Yeah.
It is just way too risky. And when you look at, I know, we were, we're hung up a lot on the percentage, the 7.29, oh my God, 7.29. But, but look at the dollar amount, the dollar amount, especially, like, we were spoiled because not only did it not go up for so many years, it was in the negative, yeah, thank you. Like, look at that, look, look, it was negative $86 where we, it went down. Like, we didn't pay, we paid $86 less. We, the next year, we pay, sorry, sorry, sorry. We paid $89 less. We, I mean, for three years in a row, it went down. So over an average of five years, we as taxpayers in South Brunswick, for the program we have, the teachers we have, the buildings we have, have averaged out to $90 a year because we kind of were a little spoiled there. And now that we're saying, okay, the gravy train's over, we've got to make a decision to go up a little bit and pay some money. I said this last year when we, when we were doing this, if you want good, you've got to pay for good. It is pretty much that simple. So over a span of five years, and a home assessed in South Brunswick for $200,000, only paid $90,000, I mean, $90 for the, I know, for the whole year. So that, that's kind of what we have to look at. And if they say next year, we're going back to 2%, that does not even, 2% doesn't even cover the raises that we've already approved in contracts for the teachers. It doesn't cover the health expense that is absolutely, it doesn't even cover that. So we got to, like, kind of seal it now.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we had talked about, we had a finance committee, which I'll be getting to later, but the finance committee had met over the course of two weeks, twice, to discuss all that. I'll get into that in a little bit. And we walked away at the last meeting at the 6.53, and we had talked about it quite a bit, but I will be completely transparent and honest here, after thinking this through a little bit more, and Rajah, you and I had talked about it a little bit, too, I look at that 89, 89.36 to 94, and I really gave that some thought. Because my biggest concern was next year, making sure that we're healthy, ensuring that the money is there in case we need to do extra work. And I look at that and I think $26 a year, $26 a year annually for a family to pay to ensure that our schools are healthy, to ensure that we have the financial ability to fix things if they do come up. I think $2 a month, I know it's hard, I know, we're all there, I pay taxes, I'm not happy with it. But the fact that Trenton put this on the boards, LAP, and they didn't step up, they gave, in the last four years, half a billion dollars to Trenton, excuse me, my apologies, half a billion dollars to Newark, okay? Really upsets me a great deal. But I think about that $25, and knowing that at least the schools will be healthy if we need to fix things, I'm actually going to retract my point of 6, 6.53. I am for 7.93. I really believe that that extra $25 a year should not, should not hold us back from making the commitment we need to the school's financial stability. That's where I am.
Correction on.
You haven't corrected yet, we're just still talking.
Okay, 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 just want to make sure they know that that's what they're voting on. Yeah, yucky position to be in with the state, but here we are, and so here we are. And no offense to Dave and Scott, I don't want them to have to come begging us again next year for more money.
We don't know them.
That's what I'm saying, like, so, so by doing this tonight, yeah, unless they make the, the, what is that again? Where, that they jacked this up?
For your average kind of.
Oh my God.
The ratables?
Not the ratables, the, um, to make us, thank you, adequacy. You know, unless the state just makes to go, that, that makes that go up again, but, okay, so do we have any more questions here, guys?
Yep.
Okay.
Please see someone to make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
To make a motion to where you want to land, and then you can vote on that motion, because then Dave will put that motion on the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to go to 6, 7.29.
Yeah, that bottom line.
I'm sorry for changing.
Okay, thank you. I'll second it.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Approve for the tentative budget?
So what, what we're really doing is we're adjusting the motion 1.8 in our consent agenda to show that the board is approving the increase to the local fair share by the maximum allowable amount in the tax incentive aid program that the Department of Education put out this year.
Okay.
That does not change.
The changes that Scott has to make.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Agreed.
Yeah.
And I know you just mentioned it, that the tax levies goes into the operating account, but the difference, right about a million, is there a way to, to somehow commit and secure that goes directly in reserves?
So what happens, Rajah, is if there's more money in the account, we're able to bring down fund balance, therefore leaving money, so when we, in our first few years here, before they started taking all the money, we put money into the reserve accounts at the end of the year. That's our goal each year, to get healthy in the reserve accounts. So an extra million to the health of the district at the end of this, at the end of next school year, Dave will be able to make a recommendation to the board to move money into the reserves. That's the first time you can do that.
Okay. No, so again, I'll be a little bit direct, what, what I'm wondering is, how do we, as a board, feel secure that the additional million, let's say, for example, we are, we are talking about, will be eventually moved to reserves? And for some, whatever reason, since we had money or we did something.
I mean, generally, yeah, you, you want to hold us accountable to committing to that million dollars to go into the reserves. You're asking us to do that, that's the work we would work to do.
Okay, yeah, you can see that with it.
And that's all we can do, though, there's no, there's no other mechanism.
There's the audit, correct?
But there's also, at the end of every year, when there's surplus left over in Fund 11, the board has to determine and allow the business administrator to make the transfers for the surplus.
Of course.
Into those reserve accounts. So at the end of, the, at the end of that fiscal, or at the end of that year, Jan, June 30, you're going to see a motion come across after our audit, and the auditors are going to say this is what's left over in your surplus, as per your business administrator's recommendation, we're going to move this million dollars, or this million dollars if there are any left in the surplus into those reserve accounts. That's how it gets there.
No, I'm now following more the process, but you understood the spirit of where I was coming from, right?
Exactly.
I think you're, I think you're, I think you're very clear.
Yeah, and you know what? That's our job.
Yeah, you are.
That's our job, and I commend you for asking that, I think that's a great question, I really do.
So on, there's a motion on the table to, to allow the, the Board of Education, or to provide, the Board of Education to provide the maximum amount allowable in the, we're going to call this the Tax Incentive Aid, Motion 1.8, to increase the local fair share to the amount, to the amount allowable, which is the $5,125,539. There's a motion on the table, I'll take a roll call on this, even though it's in our consent agenda, only because.
It's a roll call.
I want to pull this out and, and put it on record. So let's go, roll call, vote on the motion. Did I have a first and a second? I did?
You did.
Okay. Ms. Julie Farrar?
Accept.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Rajakrishna?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
I'm still debating, but, but considering this motion is to submit a tentative budget, I accept.
Mrs. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Okay.
Finish the rest of the agenda.
Finish the rest of the agenda. Okay, so next up is our board committee, and liaison reports, meet Khan, policy.
The policy committee has not met this month, so I don't have an update at this time.
Can I, can I just add a little bit to that? We're waiting to hear from the state on our cell phone?
Cell phone.
On cell phone? Because I know that's a big thing, so.
We're actually waiting for a, the state to issue language so that Strass estimate can create a draft policy. That will then give us the information to then ask the survey questions. We want, we don't want to ask this survey question to questions we can't do.
Right.
So we're waiting on that. And if they, if they don't do it soon enough, we're gonna ask the survey questions anyway.
Okay, all right, good.
Because you want to be in place for next year
Right.
with a plan.
Right, exactly. Because I know that's a biggie. Okay, um, Ms. Rogers, finance.
Thank you. So again, we discussed the financial health of the district. We talked in depth of programs, as well as their importance. Significantly, Mr. Fetter provided a detail of the enrollment decreases across the district. I know there's more questions from the committee. I know that they'll be answered. And its impact to our staffing. The committee also agreed upon that percent increase. We were originally at 6.53, as I had mentioned. That's where we were as well. That included the healthcare waiver, which brought us up to the $50,000 incentive, as Mr. Fetter presented as well. Finally, Mr. Palowski reviewed the fund balance, which we had just talked about in depth, and the impact on this current budget and next year's. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Krishna, operations?
Yeah, we, we had our operations committee meeting on Monday, 8th of April. And it was attended by me, by Lisa Rogers, Mike Mitchell, Laura Fernandez, Laura Hernandez, sorry, Scott, David, Brian Redfield, the Director of Business and Grounds, and Stephen Corsa, the Assistant Business Administrator. And as, as Scott and Dave already have explained about all the outstanding things that we are doing, the committee had discussed the current state of reserve account and our ability to maintain our buildings across the district. Specifically, we discussed the Crossroads South Gym Roof. Its original, it's the original of the building and the current leaking that has punctured the roof with the solar panels mounting system, as well as the deterioration of the original fiberglass panels. Also, the committee discussed the issue with the high school tennis court shifting and cracks, which are making the court not playable, and we need repairs to that. We received pricing for both these projects, as well as potential incentives, AIDS impact on the project and overall budget health moving forward. Finally, we did review a list of projects that are currently on hold as our ability to fund them is not available, as already discussed earlier in the budget. That's it.
Thank you. Education, Dr. Raj is out. He's not here tonight. Dr. Mammon and Suzanne. Go ahead, do you want to hit that up? Our education, I know that we talked about the National Anthem, right? Was that, so we met via Zoom, and we talked about looking at the National Anthem, incorporating that into the elementary level. And Dr. Mammon spoke with our music teachers. And they had a great point. They're like, they, you know, they do lots of patriotic songs. The kids work on a lot of patriotic songs, but as far as the National Anthem learning at such a young age, they just don't have the range. Like, it's just too above. It's like teaching calculus to third graders. So, anything else, guys, that I missed on that? Okay, that was, it was pretty short. Liaison reports, I want to start with mine. And this is for, this is actually from Ms. Carthick, who couldn't be here today, but sent me a message and said, please read this. She would like to congratulate the efforts of Dr. Mammon and the Parent Academy in organizing the Anxious Generation Panel. She said that the student panel was extremely informative and perceptive, and the kids offered amazing insight. And she attended both and was beyond impressed. And she wanted to make sure that I thanked you on her behalf and your crew, and tell them what a great job.
Thank you. We had a whole team. It was really, it was a lot more fun for us than other parent academies. But to hear our students speak and tell us how we can better talk to them and get them to do things was really insightful. So I just thank Ms. Carthick for her kind words, and I will share that with the rest of the team.
Awesome, good, thank you so much. Any other liaison reports right now?
Yes. I've been pretty silent lately, but I want to definitely speak up about Mr. SBAHS, which I intended along with Ms. Carthick, and the outstanding job that the, the team did, the students did, and presenting themselves. It was a lot of fun. Our teacher, MCs, did an outstanding job. They really, really set the tone for the entire evening. And I'm so super proud of them. And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to share this last time. But, um, no, she didn't. But I wanted to make sure that I did this time. Also, the annual chessathon, I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was a great success. And just want those individuals, those students to know, you know, how proud we are of them. And I'm so sorry I couldn't make it this year. And I'm so looking forward to next year's event, because it's a great event, it's a big event. And just wanted to give them a shout out on this evening. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to old business. The budget, we did that. We're not going back to that right now. New business, there was none at that time. We are up for public comments on any topic, but our public, like, left the building. They left, Elvis has left, not yet. Like, I gotta read my little thing, and then we're gonna welcome you up there. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Complete copies of Palace Policy 0167, which govern this portion of the meeting, are available to the public at the auditorium entrance, online, or by contacting the board office. To permit the fair and orderly expression of comments, we ask that participants be recognized by the presiding officer and preface comments by announcing his or her name, place of residence, and group affiliation, if appropriate, and by completing the sign-in sheet. Please print legibly, or we will be unable to document your name for permanent records. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Mr. Palowski will indicate when you have 15 seconds remaining. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members. No discussion between a participant and respondent shall extend a three-minute time limit. It is our plan to listen to each member of the public. Once all questions and comments from all members of the public are made, the Board of Education may respond or respond via email in the most timely and efficient manner available. All questions and comments will be noted. Mr. Palowski, has anyone pre-registered?
Yes, we have. Mr. Barry Nathanson has pre-registered. We also have Mr. Umesh Mehta, if he's here, he could make his way to the podium as well.
Barry Nathanson. Mr. Umesh.
Mike is not behind the podium. Barry Nathanson, 40 Dunston Lane, Manmouth Junction, New Jersey. I'm here to talk about the budget. I appreciate what you did this evening. It was a necessary thing. Let me give you some history and knowledge that I have fell on in the last few weeks. I'm a former member of the New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Committee. And I was, as of last year, I was the longest-serving member of that body. For some stupid reason, they still communicate with me. And I still talk to them. Within the last couple of weeks, and I've CC'd a few of you on the letter, I have continued sending it out. I have also spoken to several people, like Vingo Powell, a few others, because the issue of the funding formula was on the docket on the Legislative Committee almost every meeting for the last couple of years. We knew it was sunsetting. We knew it wasn't a good formula. They kept promising us that they were gonna do something, they were gonna come up with a formula. I listened to Scott and Lisa testify last year. They said the same thing to them. They said, they kept saying it, okay? This is not in writing or whatever, but the bottom line is, we have a new governor coming. They basically use this as a scapegoat, that they don't have to come up with a formula before they got a new governor, because they didn't know what direction the new, whoever the new governor was. And this is the way to almost illegally get around it. Because I brought it up with a couple of them. How is this legal? Did the Department of Education come up with it? They're not saying that. It, it came through the Department of Education, but it wasn't voted on. So this is a way for them to not do it, but do it, okay? And just to clarify, Lisa, Newark is getting $1.326 billion this year, which is a 6% increase from the $1.251 billion. I have constantly brought this up. There is, there is a member of the Newark School Board or Newark District on the Legislative Committee. He happens to be an aide to the mayor that was appointed to the school board. So it's kind of, you know, funny. I've gotten enormous fights. But Scott brought it up. If they only got a half a billion, if they've only got $800,000, $800 million, and spread the rest out to the districts that got cut, we'd be in great shape.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Nathanson. It's always a pleasure.
I love you too.
I know. I know you do, I can feel it every time you talk.
Any other registered?
Next, anybody else here registered, want to public?
I know, come up, and any other registered?
No.
No, okay. Come on up, come on down.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jay Krishna, and I live in Manmouth Junction. I've been in South Brunswick community from, I don't know, 2016 onwards. So I have two kids in middle school. They are twin, twin boys. So, you know, so great to be here. This is my first time being in person, while I have seen this remotely in the past. I have three points for, for me to, you know, put it across to the board. And before that, you know, it's a quick shout-out to the team. You know, it's a lot of insights. It's a great, great to be here to see, you know, a lot of data points and all the work and so on, right? So thank you for that, first of all. And to my point, you know, Scott brought in the point of the enrollments, right? So when I moved into this school district in 2016, the rating was around nine, right? So while I agree with the point on the aging community, so this, the rating has also is, makes a play in, you know, in terms of people coming into this community who'd like board to see how, what, what all the actions we are looking to take on that, right? And second is more personally what, as we are as a family, as we are going through. The last year, you know, the, from the extracurricular activities, there has been a cut down on the soccer teams and there has been cut down on the program. So which is, which is also something which I wanted to put it across. What is the, why, while we are talking about adding the funding and ask and increasing the funds and so on, there is a program, you know, cut down, to, you know, request the board to look at that, right? And third is on the summer program, which is, me as a fam, we are a family, we are going through as we speak. The template what you had in the past is, has been revised in the current, current period, which is like a trimester one and trimester two only has been considered for this year. So which is, I would urge board to look at how that has been considered in the past. You know, why don't we consider in the same way in the future also, right? So that is something, this is specifically for the geometry, you know, for going into the ninth grade and so on, right? So that's something which I wanted to, personally, as a family, what we have seen this, while I have added those two points, which I have seen in the past and the current year also, what we are going through. Those are all the three points what I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. You're welcome, we're glad you came. Thank you so much. Anybody else in the audience? We have anybody else? Okay, well then I'm going to close this portion of public comments. Next order of business is the consent agenda review by Mr. Palowski.
All right, everybody, we have a very concise consent agenda. We have the board transfers, financials, a bills list.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
We have acceptance of some funds for some non-public handicaps. We're approving transportation contract. We also have an athletic trip transportation contract for the season. We have a tentative district budget. And I said in our update, the rationale for this was the last paragraph that specified the use of the healthcare waiver. 1.8 we modified earlier to show a number at the bottom that is equivalent to the maximum ability for the district to take. We have our HIV bullying trans, excuse me, bullying and intimidation report, student field trips. We have transportation travel reimbursement expenses for staff. We are approving a nursing plan that was added to our board portal. A little bit later, I also emailed that out to some members that were questioning. We have a professional services update for special education services, and we are revising our school calendar. And that is our consent agenda.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Palowski on our consent agenda?
I do have questions on the nursing plan, so maybe slightly clarification type. So this nursing plan is, if I understand, is a, is a list of protocols or steps that each nurse will, will adopt in, in a situation of that particular conditions? Is that accurate?
It's been in place for years, yes.
Okay. So what are the changes? Are there any changes, or is it exactly the same?
There's, there's typically no changes to that plan. It's just every year needs an update.
And this year, Rajesh, we're gonna have the nurses actually, they want, they want, they've asked to do a review. And this summer, they should be producing a, any modifications, and you'll be seeing those, when those come out.
Okay, so that kind of dovetails into my next one, is I personally am no expert in validating those medical procedures.
in validating those medical procedures. Have we, or do we, is it a normal practice